Good morning, folks. Good morning, everyone. Carolyn Rice, School Board Chair, and on behalf of my colleagues, we welcome everyone here with us today and the viewing public as well for day two of our annual summer retreat. So we're beginning today with a session on school board compensation philosophy, and this will be an outgrowth of the initial discussion from our last retreat and other discussions throughout the year. After a break, we'll stick to that general subject with our staff compensation study, a follow-up and update on the employee survey and staffing challenges and solutions. We'll then have our lunch break with another scratch cooking demo. And the afternoon session, we'll be talking about enhanced employee input process as well as another, a new family and community engagement welcome center update and tour here in this building. We'll wrap it up with a retreat summary and next steps. And as noted yesterday, the bridge school board meeting will begin at 5:00 here in this room, followed by a closed session. And School Board Council Mrs. Lanetti did email the board last night's supporting information and support of that closed session. So with that, we're going to start out with Ms. Cheryl Woodhouse is going to get us started this morning, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to say good morning. And I apologize, I have a little bit of the allergy thing going on. So if I'm not coughing, I just sound crazy. So but I'm actually feeling pretty good. I just sound crazy. So good morning, Chairwoman Rice, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. We are pleased this morning, the HR department, to bring to you several presentations. We're extremely excited to have the return of Dr. Paula Singer, who will work with you this morning to finalize your compensation philosophy. For the viewing audience, I would like to share a little bit about Siegel Consultancy Agency, which was founded in 1939, is among the top 10 U.S. compensation and benefit consultationes, which with more than 1,000 employees in 24 offices in North America. And we have had the pleasure of working with them now for a little over a year. Our focus, although they focus on many HR areas, our focus really has been in the areas of compensation and some around the market study that Dr. Paula Singer will bring to you this morning. Also, Siegel has worked with many school districts and other public entities in Virginia. And most recently, I'm sure you're aware of their work with our city as well. So without further ado, I'll bring to you Dr. Paula Singer. Thank you.
Can everybody see me? As long as you can hear me, right? So I am so delighted to be back here. You, the school board was the first client that I traveled to a year ago since COVID. And oddly enough, I did all my meetings in the last year on Zoom except for this one. I really wanted to come back here, and it was feeling safe enough again. And I certainly hope that that's true. So so much has happened in a year. Mrs. Rice and I were just talking about a year. How could it be? And it's exactly a year. It was the board retreat last July. And it feels like so much has happened and nothing's happened at the same time. But there's been so much going on. And today, we are going to talk about compensation. We're going to talk about culture. We are going to make some decisions about the compensation philosophy that we started last year. And remember, the plan was for me to come back a month or so later to finish it up. And everybody got so crazy busy and there were so many priorities that we decided to put it off till now. At the same time, we'll be starting a market study. And so I think the timing's really great because the decisions that you make will provide input into what needs to be done as we take the next steps toward the market study. So I'm delighted to see the members of the school board here because you've got some hefty decisions to make as we bring the school system forward. So what's, what are we going to do today? Or at least in the hour and 15 minutes? We are going to recap for just a few minutes what we talked about last year in 2021. We're going to gain consensus on your compensation philosophy, what kind of changes we might want to make, what we want to keep, what we might want to consolidate. But I've been told that we are not leaving this room today until we have a finalized compensation philosophy. I know that Mrs. Woodhouse and Dr. Spence are certainly committed to that. And I know that the school board, I was going to say is two, but I'm not sure. But I sure hope so. Because we cannot do the market study without that information. So one of the big things we're going to be working on is selecting the market study comparators. And you may recall, members of the school board, that we did a survey about that last year, asking all the board members their opinion about who we should compare to. And a lot of, there were some strong, strong opinions. And there were also some unsure's. And is it a local area? Is it a broader area? And that is something that is a key, key decision for today. And another key decision for this morning is where do we want to position ourselves in this market? Do we want to be at the high end, in the medium, in the low end? And for which bodies of employees? Is it the same for teachers, as administrators, as support staff? So that'll be a good upcoming conversation. And where our position is. And then we walk out with an updated compensation philosophy that will be sent to you for review. But we will have check-offs on our key points. And then, of course, I'll draft it and send it back. So any questions before we get started? All right. And feel free, by the way, to raise a hand and stop me at any time. No need to wait until the end. If I think it's something I'm going to be covering, you know, and then, you know, within subsequent slides, I'll tell you to hold off. Or but basically, we can have a discussion. You know, it's your meeting. And and I want to accommodate that. So recap. What is a comp philosophy and why do we have one? Compass to 225, 2025, and the Virginia Code. I'm going to mention that again. We talked about that a little bit last year. We are going to look at your current compensation philosophy, which I might add is good. I was impressed with it before I even started. And so now it's a matter of updating and tweaking. It's been a while. And we're going, actually, I know you've all read it, or I hope so. I know it's a handout. But we are actually going to go through it point by point, you know, and and see what we want to keep, have discussions point by point as we go through it. So what is a compensation and why do we even have one? You can see here that we cover, this is close. I'm sorry. I can't look at it from there. It's too close. So the role of compensation and benefits. It comes down to alignment. I'm a big believer in alignment. You've got Compass to 2025. How does compensation support it? How does it align with your values, your strategy, where you're going? Because compensation, of course, is pivotal in having, meeting your goals. And we'll talk about the goal that this ties into in a moment. So internal and external, and we'll talk about that, too. What prevails? You have internal equity, how positions rank to each other. But then you have market forces. And which, which one rules? So suppose you have a position, say, two supervisor positions. But let's say that one is higher, given the market rates. Do you pay that other supervisor more because of what the market says? Or do you feel like, because they're both supervisors, as an example, they need to be paid the same? What are the comparison markets against which you are going to benchmark jobs and systems? What are the types of comp and benefit systems that are best aligned with your philosophy, your mission, your vision, and your funding? Because we know that you might want to pay everybody $100,000. And is that possible? I mean, what's your funding? And what does the market say? What's beyond market factors? So where, you know, we talked about, for instance, the target markets. How does that compare? What's the role? What's the difference between what you look at? Where does performance pay come in? Where does any other factors that are not just within the market? Communications, how transparent are we going to be? How much are we going to tell the employees, the staff, at different levels? And I know that you share it, and they can certainly see it in a presentation today if they get on the video. But I know that you're into fairness and transparency. Governance, who's on first for what and when? What's the role of HR? What's the role of the board? What's the role of Dr. Spence? What's the role of the leadership team? Who designs, who implements, who approves? And again, go back to the role of compensation and benefits. So Compass to 2025, that is huge. You've got goal number four is to foster a positive working environment, a positive working climate that values and invests in a high-quality diversified workforce who exemplifies, exemplifies the division's core values. And that is something this board has been very involved in. What are the values and how do we align with them? And one of your strategies to meet this goal is to remain focused on providing a competitive compensation and benefits plan that includes differentiated compensation for hard-to-staff positions in schools. So one of the things I want to say about this is, first off, you are saying competitive. So you certainly don't want to be behind the market. And then it's up to you to talk about what competitive means, which we'll be talking about. And I want to, I was thinking about this the other day, and probably because of some work I've been doing for another client. Putting in your strategy that differentiated compensation is really key because a lot of people struggle with that, feel they can't do it, feel they have to hire somebody at step one when they come in. But the fact that you can differentiate as needed is really important. And I think last year, I didn't even realize how important that was. So it's, I'm pleased to see it in there. And then I just want to mention that the Virginia Code talks about keeping, you know, the ability to attract and keep highly qualified at or above the national average of the teacher salaries. So when it comes to teachers, HR has this information. And you'd think it would be really, really high. But by national average, it's lower than what you're willing to pay. So I just wanted you to know that that's in the Virginia Code. And it's not something that we'll necessarily be looking at as we design a pay plan. So here is the comp philosophy. Has, has everybody had a chance to look at it before? If not, don't worry because we'll be going through it point by point. And it starts with, this is the opener. The vision statement for the school board of the City of Virginia Beach has the goal that every student will be achieving at his or her maximum potential in engaging, inspiring, and challenging learning environment. And that's what the school system is about. And therefore, you strive to provide a total comp program that enables the school division to attract and retain a highly qualified and diverse workforce. And I know that you've been doing a lot of work in both of those arenas, and you're going to hear more about that later today, too. Ensure fair and consistent pay practices, comply with applicable laws and regulations, and operate within the constraints of fiscal resources while balancing and achieving educational goals. So your point number one. The total comp program will align with the division's overall mission in support of the division's strategic goals and objectives. Does this make sense? Is it a keeper? Members of the board? Okay, okay. So I'm going to go point by point, and I'm going to ask you to raise your hands because this is commitment time. Point number two. And here we have the biggest question of the day or one of them. Division will strive to provide a total compensation program that is world-class, highlights mine, by the way, among all accredited K-12 institutions. The school division endeavors to be economically competitive with organizations in southeastern Virginia and for certain position outside of our local labor market. So what does this mean? And how do we carry that forward? Wait, can you hear? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, got it. I know it's right here. Is this on? There's a. Thank you. Work? Okay, good. So we have world-class. Mrs. Rice?
My first impression is world-class might refer to a school system, but not to a compensation program.
But this is your compensation philosophy.
But it's defining here a compensation program that is world-class. And I just don't associate that adjective with compensation programs.
So maybe that first sentence shouldn't be there?
Well, or just, I'm just now focusing on world-class since you want us to be wordsmithing.
Yes. Yes.
How about competitive?
To be competitive among all accredited K-12 systems? Well.
World, or the all isn't, it need be all.
Well, we have to define competitive. So you were saying, what? I'm sorry, Mrs. Manning. You were, were you saying something?
No, I just commented that. She didn't think that.
Other comments?
I think you were, I'm sorry.
I agree that I don't love the world, the world-class there. I would have been okay with the word competitive there. I don't know if, if we need that first sentence at all. If we could just start with the school division endeavors to be economically competitive with organizations. And I don't know if we want to just keep it with southeastern Virginia and for certain markets outside. Or maybe that the division will strive to provide a comprehensive, total compensation plan so that it emphasizes not just the salary piece, but whatever overall pieces are going to be included, with our benefits, with our retirement, with whatever other perks we can have. But yeah, I could, I could do without the world-class. It seems almost conflict to have the world, world-class and then southeastern Virginia.
It is, which is. I, I, I was actually thinking competitive at first as well. But I agree that, but it doesn't go along, world-class does not go along at all with just comparing ourselves with southeastern Virginia. And so, you know, competitive with organizations in Virginia. I mean, we could say Virginia, but, but not just southeastern Virginia. Of course, the problem is, is that when you compare yourself to Virginia, you're also comparing yourself to northern Virginia, which, you know, their salaries put all of, a lot of us to shame, so.
Right. And by the way, we will give you some suggestions of local labor market area, and we'll come back to that. Melnick? Thank you.
I was just, I mean, competitive with whom? And so then you're allowing somebody else to set the standard for which you will be competitive. And that's why I didn't want to go from world-class to competitive. I'd rather get rid of that.
Get rid of world-class? The whole first sentence?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Okay.
With whom? Because we're, it's always a battle for us. So right now, we battle Chesapeake. And so we're going to be in this constant, who gave an extra?
10 cents.
Exactly. And then it's playing catch-up at some point. And we've been saying this for years. At some point, someone's got to say enough is enough. Let's pay the teachers what, you know, we have, we have to pay the teachers properly. And we have to, we, we tend to devalue is what we do. And we need to value them for the professionals that they are. So I just, it's just a constant battle.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, let me hit this side of the room. I'll come back to you, Mrs. Rice. Yes, Ms. Riggs?
Okay. I, first of all, I don't think it should just be southeastern Virginia because we have to be competitive for everywhere right now. We, we've got people coming and leaving and going up to northern Virginia. They're going over, you know, to different states. We're close to North Carolina. I mean, everybody is competitive. So I don't think we should limit it to southeastern Virginia. And obviously, we need to be competitive, and we need to bring the salaries up to what they need to be. And that's not just a competitive around this area. That needs to be what we need to be paying our teachers and our employees. So southeastern needs to come out as far as southeastern Virginia.
Okay. So let me test to see if we have a little bit of consensus to start. Am I hearing that we can take out that first sentence? Raise hands? Okay, good. First sentence is out. Major change, yes. All right. Now, "School division endeavors to be economically competitive with organizations in southeast Virginia and for certain position outside our local labor market." So let me tell you first what we were originally suggesting that we compete with in the Virginia area. Chesapeake, when we did the survey, everybody said Chesapeake. And as you mentioned, back and forth, back and forth, 10 cents, 20 cents, 30 cents, and back and forth. Norfolk, Newport News, Chesterfield, which represents the Richmond area as well as Prince William County, which is a northern Virginia. So we have three schools in the Hampton Roads area and one in the Richmond area and one in northern Virginia. We also wanted to include the two city governments because not everybody's teachers. And so we wanted to also be competitive in the market area. So the city of Chesapeake and the city of Virginia Beach. So those two. And let me show you how they compare. And I'm not saying that we're done, by the way, with looking outside this area into a national market. But in terms of the local area plus northern Virginia and Richmond, these are how they compare. You can see total student count, expenditures per pupil, teacher-student ratio as of 2020, percentage enrolled in higher ed within 16 months of graduation, percentage of teachers with masters or doctorates, and this cost of living index. So that was the basis upon which we did this. We have some that are smaller. Chesterfield, about the same size. But those are your local market area. So especially for non-teachers, that's where you're getting, or administrators. But your local, your clerical support, transportation, food service, and so forth are coming from there. And we know teachers are going back and forth and bouncing among those as well. Chesterfield's about the same size. Prince William's much larger. The expenditures, teacher-student ratio. These numbers come. They come from a report. I've got the site that I can send you that's put out by the state of Virginia.
Right. It's not the same with classroom sizes. It's just how many teachers we have in our whole division and teacher assistants versus how many students.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I'm just want to clarify. Are we going to use the QMS, Rice? Or are we going to just not use that today?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know what that is.
Well, I'm just asking the chair how the meeting will be conducted right now.
I think right now she asked for a show of hand. So if we could all.
Okay, so you don't want us to use the microphone system?
Whatever you want. I don't even know about that.
Just because she can see you all and I can.
Sounds good. I'm glad that the cost of living index is on this slide. And my comment for the previous number that we were looking at, when we talk about competitive, I don't know if it needs to be actually in the words. But I think when we're talking about competitive, we need to be thinking competitive with the cost of living in Virginia Beach. When our cost of living has gone up however many percentages and our salaries are not tracking with that, I think that's part of the problem. And so competitive, looking for that definition, I want it to include the cost of living somehow. And I can wordsmith it up or whatever. But that needs to be part of what we are looking at, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
I mean, I kind of agree with that. But also, I get concerned when we're trying to compare our compensation to northern Virginia. The cost of living is a lot higher in northern Virginia. Salaries, as we can see, that cost of living index, I thought it would be much higher for Prince William. But northern Virginia, when we're comparing the average salary in northern Virginia is much, much higher than it is in Virginia Beach. So I think we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at our compensation based upon cost of living for our area.
So that's a really good point. I was thinking two things as I was putting together this slide. And I'm going to, not ignoring this side of the room. One thing I was thinking about was Prince William might balance out with Chesterfield. And the other thing we can do is adjust. We can adjust all the numbers we have to the Virginia Beach cost of living. So we just adjusted for cost of living. So we'll look at the data. But I was sort of thinking it would be a wash. Yes, Mrs. Rice?
So I appreciate the remark. For me, it's the, it's, it's one northern Virginia school among, system among five listed here. So it's just another reference for us. So that's why I would still like, and I, I, again, you're the professional. And I assume, I mean, you picked a single district in Richmond, a single district in northern Virginia. But we still have three that are local. So from your standpoint, that's just, it's a reasonable mix. Are there any other reasons other than what I suggested?
Unless you want to look beyond Virginia and for which positions. So, and is there a need to?
But we're not saying here that like this would be an automatic take the average of all five of these. These are reference points for us moving forward when it comes to compensation, right? I mean, we're not going to be analytically, they're here for, as references when we determine salary increases and budget season, right?
We're going to be designing an updated compensation program for the division. So the data we get from the survey, that, you know, the salary structures of these other organizations will inform the design of that system. So if we.
So that's, or, yes, you said inform. And I'm saying it's a reference point, but that's all it is, right? And it's to inform us. But we still take stock of all of this in coming up with that salary guide?
Yes. Yes. And, and there are other factors. The market might say that, no. Internal equity might say that IT positions should be paid $5 an hour, based on internal equity. Of course, I'm making that up. But the market might. But the market might say seven fifty an hour. So, um, we definitely would go with the market, but we'd also look at how that's valued in your organization. So you have different specialty areas and different, you know, if it's special education, that may or may not be valued more than other programs. So we take that into consideration because every school system will value different positions, different structures differently. So we take into strong consideration what's really important to you all here. If that answers that question. Other comments, yes?
Well, I do believe that we have to use this as a reference. I also believe we use this as our talking points too, because if we're looking at this, so I just did the top three of each category. And basically, in Prince William, they are number one, basically for every category, with the exception of expenditures per pupil, which is they're slightly lower, they're number two. But they, their student-teacher ratio is fourteen point two, which is lower than us. I have to think, we also have to look at things we can't control and things we can't control as well. And so one thing that I would say is that, you know, if you're looking just in terms of what we call Hampton Roads, you know, which is Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Newport News, our student count is incredibly higher, incredibly higher than any of those areas. And yet we compare ourselves to them all the time. And our student-teacher ratio is fourteen point five six, and Chesapeake is eleven point two six. So I mean, one thing that I would like to do today in developing this comp philosophy is that we do take the factors, and thank you for providing all this clarity, that we do take the factors that we have in front of us, what we can control, and then decide. And I think personally, we have to be very clear about what our mission is in Virginia Beach. And our mission statement has to be clear, concise, and what we're about. And then that is going to help drive a lot of this, including comp. Because there are some things we can't control. We can't control that we have sixty-five thousand students rather than Newport News at twenty-six thousand, six seventy-seven. So, so I just want to make sure that when we're talking about this today, that we do look at our mission and what we can control within our, within our parameters. Because there are some things we just can't, you know. If we're going to have a higher student-teacher ratio and a higher student count, then we have to adapt for that and not just say, well, we have to be competitive with Newport News because they've got twenty-six thou, they've got, not even half, less than half the student count that we have. And, but, but by the way, our academies are, all of the things that we provide in Virginia Beach are incredibly different, which is the reason why people are drawn to Virginia Beach to bring their kids to school. So I think that all has to be factored in, so.
And, and you're totally right. And yeah, where does our talent come from and where do they leave to go to? And so it might be a very different system size-wide or cost of living-wise, but where do they come from and where do they go to? And so size doesn't matter from that perspective if we're losing teachers to go down the street.
Well, that is the juggle, right?
Yes.
And that's the juggle because, yes, when it comes to, if we were just talking merely about our academics and what we offer in Virginia Beach, that's a totally different conversation than comp philosophy.
Yes. Yes, this is just comp philosophy.
But the problem is, we have, that's what we have to do, is we have to juggle that as the board, right? We have to decide what are, you know, what is our mission? How do we continue to attract the people that want to be part of that mission? And, and I think that if we drive the mission and we drive that and, and then work on everything else we can control, maybe it'll somehow work hand in hand at some point. But, but yeah, that is the juggle, right?
Yes. And, and I don't know if I mentioned this last year or not, compensation is definitely an art and a science. You know, the science is easily, I can take the numbers, create a salary structure in no time. And then there's the art part, juggling such issues as we're talking about here. Other thoughts on this?
I just shared that it's, it's too bad that city council is not present right now to hear this, to see this. And Mrs. Manning just said, well, we could share this with them. We need to share this with our city council. They control our money. They control how much money we have, how much money we have to work with. And so if we, let's say we want to lower our student-teacher ratio. Well, first of all, you have to back up and make sure you have enough teachers. And how do you have enough teachers? That's raising our salaries and showing that we value teachers. We need to start from scratch. Look at our start, our whole compensation package for teachers. Look at the starting salary for what we're paying starting salary teachers and start from there.
That's what we're going to be doing.
If we raise that by ten thousand dollars, everything else has to raise by ten thousand dollars too. But that's money, big money. But do we have the backing from our city council to be able to do that? That's where we are right now. And I'm not sure we have the backing with the current city council, whether they're, whether they're able to say, we're willing to put the money there so that we can raise our starting salary, for example, and everything else in the, in the compensation scale. Because you don't want to have to compact it, you know, just raise the starting salary. That helps nobody else who's already here. So we have to, if we're going to raise it by ten thousand dollars, we got to raise everybody else as well, so. I'm just, it's frustrating. And I'm, you can hear the frustration in my voice right now.
I can.
Because I am very frustrated with, with the compensation that we have available, the money that we have available to do anything with our salaries.
Yeah, and that's the sell job. Once we have the data, when we're armed with data, then we can move it forward. Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to blame city council. We have record amount of money in our budget this year. It's a matter of priorities and how we spend that money. And when we, when we say, oh, we need to ask city council, what you're really saying is we need to ask the taxpayer. Because city council doesn't just print money. City council has to take that money out of the wallets of the taxpayer. So when we are looking at priorities, we have to say, is this a priority to the taxpayer? Or is the, is the priority flooding, for example, with city council? That was one of the big issues that we had to address in our city. And so we have record spending on the school board this year compared to previous years. And it's a matter of how we prioritize to spend that money.
Okay, I understand that. And let's try to stay focused on the comparables. So you add your hand up. Ms. Hughes?
Well, and I tend to agree with that. If we're just asking for tax raises, you can give teachers an extra ten thousand dollars. But when you raise their taxes ten thousand dollars, it's, you're not giving them anything. They still have to pay their bills to live here too. A couple of years ago, I suggested that we discuss salaries first and build the rest of our budget after it. And everybody looked at me like I had two heads. We need to prior, if this is the priority, let's deal with this first and then we'll talk about everything else afterwards. Act like it's a priority.
Well, I would venture to guess that salaries are the preponderance of your budget. Yeah, yeah. And the people, your employees are what runs the division. I see also that we've been talking about teachers. Let's not forget that we also have support staff and administrators. Okay, okay, because I just want to make sure. And I want to know if you want to consider anything else for, say, the administrative staff? Any other markets? Yeah, Ms. Manning?
Well, we're having a compensation study that's going to be looking at all of the other markets, all the other positions. And I think that we need to wait and see what we find out through that.
Okay. So in a way, this is a little backwards, but it's not. We are going to be doing the compensation study. We need these answers in order to inform the other organizations that we collect data from in order to do that. So you need to say, you know, Paula, we want you to get data from these organizations and the city governments in order to design our new structure. That's part of the outcome for today. We need to know which organizations are our comparators and where we want to be positioned in the market for each of our main groups.
So in order to move on from this, I would just suggest right now getting the read of the board on so that we can move forward from this screen. Because we have ten more bullets of the philosophy and we have till ten o'clock to do it.
Some of them will go very quickly. This, this and another one are right, the keystones. And yes, you're right. So, okay, I know we've got consensus that we will take out, you know, that first sentence. Can we agree that these comparators will be the comparators that we will use to design the market study? Yes, hands up.
With one exception, I thought we also talked about not just saying southeastern Virginia.
I'm just asking about the market. Okay, I am not seeing consensus. Do you all agree that these should be the market comparators for the study? That we collect data from these seven organizations? So it's the five school systems and the cities in order to design the salary scale?
So the question is, do you support the consultant recommendation right now to use these five districts? So show a raised hand if you do. And two cities, thank you.
Mrs. Holtz, do you want to talk about your objection?
I have always objected to us being in a category of southeastern, southeastern area. If you want to compare salaries, look upon Virginia Beach as a hub and draw a circle around that. That brings in a whole lot of areas north of us. And that salary scale would be totally different. And I believe at one time that was done, I remember like fifteen years ago when I was teaching, the salary was too high. So then they lowered it, and that's how we got dumped into southeastern area. So I have a memory of that.
Okay, so this, as you can see, and I'm sorry, we will go back to that second sentence. The question isn't about southeastern Virginia right now. As you can see, these comparators have more than southeastern Virginia. We have Prince William and we have Chesterfield, which are not in southeastern Virginia. So can you agree with these comparators under those conditions? Okay, hands? I'm sorry. Question?
Yep, I had a question. And maybe because I was sidebarring, I don't know if this is the same. But we talked before last summer about the possibility of including other organizations other than just city government and school districts when we're talking about our support staff comparisons, our bus drivers. Yes, we're looking at comparisons to other cities, but if we're losing them to Amazon and other driving companies, is there a way that we look at that? Or if we're losing our support staff because they can work at Target for more pay? Some of those places are competitors as well. And I don't know if there's any way that we look at that or if we're just interested in looking at other districts.
I think that is an excellent point, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that. And you're right, no, we talked about it last year. So here's what we do to take care of that. What is particularly important in those positions is the local market area. And what we do is, Siegel has this huge bank of published data sources. We use Economic Research Institute, competent analysts, and pay factors in order to collect data. So that's published data, that's updated all the time. We have online access to it. And those, that information will be used to capture the non-exempt jobs in the system as well as what's available in the school system. So you'll essentially be seeing the seven plus three, four non-education-specific positions will be using those three other sources that include, you know, hundreds of companies and large organizations and smaller organizations. So thank you for bringing that up. Mrs. Woodhouse?
I would just like to suggest, I think we're getting very hung up on one statement of a philosophy concept. So in terms of comparative market, we're going to look at local schools. We're going to look at school divisions outside. We're going to look at other organizations. This is a little bigger and broader, and I don't want us to get caught up in who we compare ourselves with because, you know, the Department of Human Resources, we will bring back to you a presentation always that compares ourselves to local agencies. This is kind of, and I think Ms. Manning said it earlier, when, and Ms. Hughes, when we are in the midst of the budget process, how, as a board, will we prioritize, or you prioritize, with the amount of funding that we have available? So I'd bring that to your attention because if not, you're absolutely correct. We'll be four o'clock still trying to determine who to compare ourselves. What's the big overarching theme? What is it that our board wants all of our employees to know and understand? That every time we enter into the budget season, that these will be our priorities? And so I just wanted to bring that, you know, to your attention. Because if not, we'll go back and forth, Prince William, you know what I mean? And so I just wanted to bring that up and clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking budget, I'm just thinking comp study. All right, so let's go back to where we were. These comparators plus the published data sources. We have consensus. I'm sorry, I'm seeing... Laura, Ms. Hughes, are you okay with this? Okay, good. So we have adopted our comparators, which I might say was a huge part of what I was hoping we accomplished today. Now, let's make it a little, another hard one and then they get easy. What is your target market position? And can it differ on each of these? So say we come back with all the data and we say, where do we want to design our pay scale? Do we want essentially the median of, do you want to pay at the fiftieth percentile of these, of these organizations? Forty, sixty, a hundred? Or do you want to be in the top three? Do you want to be number one? You want to be smack in the middle? So I'm going to take it and start with what might be the hardest one, might be the easiest one, teachers. Where do you want your instructional staff to be? Should they be equal to the average of all these others? Remembering that you've got some high ones in there? Or how do we design the schedule? So I'm going to toss out this example. We strive to be among the top three. I say strive because of course it's budget permitting. How do you feel about being in the top three? So I'm seeing some head nods. Others?
I'm confused.
I'm sorry?
What are you talking about? Which top three?
Okay, say we get the data back. And let's say we've got Chesapeake, Prince William, and Chesterfield are the top three of the data when it comes back. So when we look at the average, you want to be in that top three of the highest-paying school divisions as opposed to four, five, six, seven with the cities.
So it's just the divisions that you mentioned on the previous slide?
Yes.
Okay.
So you want to be number one, you want to be number five, you want to be right in the middle. Number one would put you with Prince William potentially.
I think top three is reasonable.
Others, I'm sorry?
I think top three is reasonable.
Top three?
When HR brings us recommendations...
When HR brings us recommendations, they don't use those, they use only local. And that, and then, and we rank ourselves among eight local school divisions, I say eight. So I would think if we're only talking about those five, then those five would be, then that would be reasonable, the top three. But we don't compare ourselves to Prince William typically when we talk about compensation packages and in comparison.
Yes. This might be a change, that's why we're having this big conversation as you go forward and design a new pay plan in a new market area, of course.
I was fine a while ago with you saying, you know, the, the other five cities or localities. But, but she's right, we normally get compared to Norfolk and Chesapeake as the top two that we get compared to all the time. Newport News occasionally we compare to, but, but usually it's Norfolk and Chesapeake because what we're finding is that in most cases, our staff in general migrate between Norfolk, Chesapeake and Virginia Beach. And those are the three. So maybe we need to go back to the other slide and, and add Norfolk to one of those, as one of those localities as, as well. I didn't see Norfolk. Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right.
My, my bad.
So let me test here, can we say top three, four, teachers? Hands up. I'm not seeing huge agreement with that. Who does not agree with that and why? Yes, Mrs. Wright?
I just have a broader question about, do you generally recommend getting this specific with a compensation, we're talking about compensation philosophy about top three?
No, this, this is for us to know what, Mrs. Woodhouse?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, I think you're mixing the two presentations and I think we need to focus on the philosophy statement. I understand what you're trying to draw from that to help drive the market study.
Yes.
But I don't think you need to mix the two. If you could just stay with the philosophy and not pigeonhole them into.
Oh, sorry.
So again, we, we have a couple of different things going on. We have the compensation philosophy and then we have the market study. What we need to do is just stay focused on the, the compensation philosophy. So it's like our strategic plan 2020. We talking in high balcony view of what we want every student to have and to know and to understand when they leave and graduate from Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So for the school board philosophy statement, we need the overarching theme similar to what you have in front of you, of what message do you want our employees to know, to understand when they come and work for us and leave us after 40-plus years? So if we pigeonhole them too much, because what organization would not say, I want salaries to be the highest, but you also have to recognize that you have a budget in which you live with. So for instance, and I don't want to put this philosophy on you, I was thinking things such as each year annually, we will review the market, see if we remain competitive, and then have conversations around how to keep our employees with the best benefit packet possible. That's not a first, that's not a second, that's not a third. That's saying every year we commit ourselves to educating ourselves on where we are in the market. And so that's part. Within the budget that we are allocated, we will make maybe salaries a priority while also looking at those most difficult to staff positions, understanding that that might mean a fluctuation in how we give raises. Topics such as that, not necessarily will we be first, second, or third.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up and why it becomes important, especially in the market study, in light of the comp philosophy, it says that you strive to be economic competitive. So I guess my question is, do you want to keep it vague like that? Whereas I was thinking you might want to be more specific. So shall we say we're going to keep it vague? Okay, consensus?
Yes.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the first sentence and we are changing the second sentence to organizations in, in Virginia. Okay, terrific. All right, so.
Can I just say something?
Of course.
Keeping in mind, can you go back to that other slide? Keeping in mind, this is just my opinion, but we want, no, go back to the world class. Keeping in mind that we want to be considered a world-class K through 12 institution. Not, not using accreditation, but keeping in mind that, you know, the things that we offer in our city, they all cost money. Keeping in mind that we only have a finite amount of money to spend, but we want to be world-class in what we offer our students. At the same time, keeping in mind that we also need to increase our compensation for everyone. You can go back to the world class.
Yeah, no, no, I just want to show you that a lot of this is covered in the introduction to the comp philosophy.
Right, right. I, I don't know if somebody got hung up on world class, but, but we, we want to keep that in mind. I don't want to take away from what we offer our students because that all costs money, but at the same time, using that same amount of pot of money, we want to also be able to compensate our people.
Yes, fairly and equitably.
Correct.
So here we have point number three about benchmarking and broadbanding uses best practice for compensation. Benchmarking is, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second, we pick jobs to survey. So we're doing the comp study and that's why you have it in your philosophy, that represent common roles. So if we go to other districts and we say, you know, teaching assistant, it's common, it's understood, that's what we do in our survey, it's easy. That have multi-incumbents. We will certainly have single incumbent jobs that we'll look at because the administrators are mostly single incumbents, but we look for jobs that are multi-incumbent. We look at diversity of job families and hierarchical levels, actually patient area, basically what I call a diagonal slice of the organization from the one that's currently rated the lowest all the way up to Dr. Spence. And what we try to do is get at least 50% of the jobs represented. What we've done, working with HR, is to get 68% of this represented. And you can see that we've got 73% of classified, 47% of professionals, 42% of administrators, for a total of 68%. The teaching scale as well, as we've been talking about, will be reviewed as part of this study. And we will also be looking at reclassifications. There have been a number of requests for job reviews or reclassifications over the past year or two and we'll be looking at those as well. So I guess this point can be kept in? Benchmarking and broadbanding? Is that good? Keep in number three?
Yep.
Okay, good. Number four, compensation strategies must include the flexibility needed to adopt to market changes, maintain internal equity, and address the needs of the school divisions. And here are some examples of your current flexible practices. Early commitment, hard-to-fill teacher jobs, market-focused changes, bus drivers were an example, and the bonus. This is all in keeping flexibility with market changes. Keep this in? Okay, good. Number five, starting pay for employees will be based on education and work experience related to position requirements as well as market conditions. Good? Good. Number six, see, I told you these would go quicker, those were the hard ones, I should have moved them to the end. Allowances are available to eligible employees based on the attainment of educational slash licensing credentials earned beyond the requirement of the position to the extent that they relate to the employee's current job responsibilities and to the extent they enhance the employee's ability to contribute to the mission and strategic goals of the school division. Yes?
Is that one referring to like tuition assistance and the supplemental pay?
Yes.
Masters pay?
Masters pay, doctoral pay?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Supplements may be provided to eligible employees performing specific function outside their established job descriptions. So if they take on another role, head up the drama club, whatever, they can get supplements. Good? Good. Eight, pay adjustments other than allowances and supplements provided to employees when appropriate to address equity, market responsiveness, targeted needs and consistency in administration of the school division's comp program. So I know that's a yes because it sounds like, uh-oh, this is not, let me take you back to number four, which seems very similar. Do you think we should eliminate one?
Or merge them? Or merge, or merge them? You're suggesting, or is that a possibility if they're?
So merge four and eight.
Well, I'm asking, do you ever recommend, you caught this as you went through, that they seem to be somewhat repetitive?
Yes. I think they're somewhat repetitive. How about if I look at it and come back and pick one? And we don't need both.
Or a way to combine them, they don't necessarily have to get rid of one, right?
Right. Well, they're pretty similar, but yes, I will combine them. Permission to do that?
I just want to comment though, when you are talking about supplements in number seven, it says performing specific functions outside of their established job descriptions. So if you're going to merge or eliminate one, just if, if we still believe in that, then we have to make sure that that verbiage carries over as well.
You're looking at seven, I'm looking at eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eight and four.
Yeah, because some of this is not. Yeah, because some of that verbiage, I'm sorry, I meant number, number eight, but yeah, so basically just make sure they merge because they're not exactly alike.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll make sure each, that the, the components of both will be included in the new, the new one. Good. Salary progression may occur as a result of annual salary increases, promotions, reclass, and pay adjustments. Yes? Good. Part-time temp employees may or not, may not be eligible for the same benefits as full-time staff. So I talked to Ms. Wood about that and it's like you have to be working at least 32 hours and you may be eligible for benefits, but if it's less, you're not. So is this good? Good. Benefit plans, retirement, and other non-cash comp will be, are reviewed annually for competitiveness, cost-effectiveness, and their value to employees and the division. Okay. To ensure that our comp structure remains competitive, pay ranges for all instructional positions are evaluated annually. And that's what Ms. Woodhouse and Ms. Wood bring to you every year. Pay ranges for all other job groups are reviewed as needed, but not less than every three years. And our recommendation would be basically three to five years for external review. And we think that usually three years is very good, but given changes in the market, given changes in fiscal conditions, we didn't want you to be as tied down to three years because this is a big study and a big review that we'll be doing, so we thought we'd give you some flexibility and make it three to five. Yes?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little concerned about setting a timeframe on the external review because it, it is a significant cost that we would have to endure, so I don't want to lock ourselves into something. I mean, when was the last time we did an external review? It was like, I mean, I'm not saying we should wait that long. I'm not saying we should wait that long, but going from 15 years to three to five years is a big change.
Well, right now, your comp philosophy says three years.
For external review?
Uh-huh. You just haven't followed it, right? So that's.
Something more realistic that we would follow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, with the, the way the market changes sometimes, especially like over the last couple of years, that's why I wouldn't want you to necessarily wait five years, but at some points in time, that's perfectly fine.
Well, that's why I think what you've got, the recommendation would be three to five years. I think that that's, that's reasonable and it should be because of the way the market's changing, things are just so.
Fluid.
Yeah, fluid. And so I, I think we should keep it three to five years.
What about as needed?
Oh, we'll keep in as needed.
Well, just as needed. That way we could do it, if we felt we needed it every two years, we could, if we felt we needed it seven years, we could.
I was thinking the same thing, we're getting back into like from the other discussion about top three versus something more generic.
Right.
Because I think that leaves open, right, like you say, there's some other massive economic whatever, it would be two years, but.
Why couldn't you put three to five years or as needed?
That's good.
Write in that same sentence for external review.
Right.
Add that.
Okay, you know what? You got it. Compensation philosophy will be made available to employees.
Yes.
Got it? Yeah.
Well, I would, maybe some revised wording because this is also probably on our website or if not, it should be. So I think it could be a broader statement about just that it's, it's public to everybody.
Ah, so not only to employees, it would be made available to employees and the public at large? Okay? That work for everybody? So, are we missing anything?
So, just back to our favorite number two.
I was hoping. I was hoping we could.
I know we took out the first sentence completely. Would there be a objection to just moving the part about provide a total compensation program into that second sentence? So it says, "The school division endeavors to provide a total compensation program that's economically competitive with institutions in Virginia," just so that we are making sure we're focusing not just on salary, but we are going to stay focused on all of it? Okay, thanks.
Everybody agree? Yes. Ms. Wood is taking notes. Yeah, otherwise, who knows what we said?
Wait, Ms. Owens, were you referring to the, the very first paragraph of the philosophy statement?
I'm referring to number two on the philosophy thing that was on our slide as well.
We're going to take out the first sentence.
We're taking out the first sentence, but we're keeping the one little phrase of total compensation program.
Okay.
Sure. Let's see. And I'm starting with the sentence two, "The school division endeavors," and I'm pulling that little piece, "to provide a total compensation program that's economically competitive with institutions in Virginia and for certain positions outside of our local blah blah blah."
Does that work? Mrs. Wright?
Yes. So I, I want to go back to number 10. And it just strikes me as odd wording to phrase it, this is about part-time employees, may or may not be eligible. Is there just some better way to point out that part-time employees, it's just going to, it varies? It just, if I was, this is kind of like the old PRC hat I wear, that I would just ask maybe to recon, to, to convey the same message in number 10, but with different wording.
What might you propose, Ms. Wright?
Well, something that speaks to part-time employees, their benefits are.
Yeah.
They're what? They're different.
I thought it was vague, but then once I started digging into it.
Well, no, just that part-time benef, part-time employees, I mean, I don't want to waste time here.
Wait, does it need to be in here? Does it need to be in your compensation philosophy?
Probably not.
Let me check with HR, Mrs. Let me check with HR, Mrs....
I think that's a great question.
Ms. Wood, what do you think? You're doing, you're the day-to-day... Chief of this!
I mean, I don't think it really...
Why, why, why it's, it doesn't belong in the philosophy. It's certainly going to be in regulation, but it just, I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
This is getting too specific here, or to we, it's bringing up a particular situation, and we could...
That maybe isn't... All in favor of losing it?
Oh, I am seeing severe interest over here on my left. So let me start with Ms. Hughes, the lady in the middle. You had your hand up?
I was voting to lose it. She called for a vote.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear you call for a vote, Ms. Owens.
If we're fine with losing that one, then, I don't know that it necessarily adds anything. It, we understand that it is, certain part-time employees may have some, some benefits, but I don't know if it needs to be part of our philosophy.
I consider eliminating it, is what I'm hearing.
Let me check with HR. You were, you're shaking your head, yes?
Smart lady.
Sounds good. Everybody in favor of losing number 10? Ms. Holt, you okay with losing number 10? Yeah, yeah, I don't want to raise your hand anymore. I get it. Okay. I'm just trying to make this a little more interactive and not just a boring presentation. Then, you know what? We're done. And it's 9:58. And you guys did great. And I appreciate the struggle on some of the issues, but this is big and this is important. And, and when we come back with the results of the study, we'll be taking a look at it to make sure we're all on track. So I thank you and I applaud you for your hard work on this. And I will see you again in 15 minutes as we talk about yet another topic.
So ladies, all grab your coffee. We'll reconvene in here at 10:15.
So I'm back.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so this is Carolyn Rye, again, school board chair, and our, we are reconvening for our 10:15 session. The staff compensation study follow-up, specifically the survey update. So with that, we welcome back our facilitator from Seagull.
So I'm delighted to be back in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So what we're going to talk about now is the market study, as well as the survey we did of employees. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. And some of the, you know, 30,000-foot on, we've got to hold this. Bring lights on. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, as well as the survey we did to get more employee input, and we're going to give you an overview of the findings and some recommendations. So let's start with a status update, the employee service results, and then next steps around this. So we've got a little bit about the market study, and then more about the survey. So this is where we are. As Mrs. Rye was saying before, we will be doing this compensation study, which was why we needed your input for the philosophy. We have kicked off the project, which was our first step in the proposal that we sent you, and we have completed the employee survey. That was something also in the proposal we sent you. We have, I can change this now, we have completed a strong, new philosophy with your input. So that number three can be checked off, to be finalized. The market assessment can now start soon. Actually, my project manager is going on vacation on Wednesday. When he comes back, we're going to get right into it. And in that process, we'll be setting up regular communications with Ms. Wood and Ms. Woodhouse, and getting started on collecting the data based on the information you gave in the last hour. I'll be starting soon, and then we will be back with recommendations probably in mid-late fall. So you get to see me again. I get to see you all again, which is great. And we will be giving you recommendations, and we'll also be looking at, you know, costs and so forth. So July, at the retreat, then we refine and finalize the language, and then adopt the new philosophy. Then we start the market data collection, which includes the comparative school divisions, which we have checked off. So that's already done. Selecting the benchmark jobs, which is basically done. Ms. Wood has been working hard with us on that. And then we will compile the data. September, we, what we do is, we are very big on quality control. So what we do is we will quality control the matches, not only internally to the Seagull team, but also with Ms. Wood, making sure that our matches are apples to apples and not just, you know, anything else, because we don't match just on job title. We match on a description, a job summary of both positions. We will analyze the data, and then we will prepare a report. We'll probably have a report ready to go by September, October-ish. Recommendations will come at that time, October, November. What are possible directions for change? Do we need change? If so, what and where and how? We'll model different pay program options. And we don't know what that'll look like yet until we have the data and we analyze the current state and what's needed. And then we estimate the costs, and I'm sure we'll be looking with our chief financial officer along with HR when it comes to making sure that it fits. We have extensive models, whereas we can actually online, even as we're right here, can make changes. So you don't want it to be 2.5%. Let's look at 3%, and I can show you in 10 seconds what that will look like and cost. I'm sorry, I can't do that, but my project manager, Mike Conway, can do that, to be really honest. And then we'll share the results. We'll share the results with senior staff, of course, with the school board, and then in summary fashion with the employees. Any questions on that? Okay, now about the survey. So what we did was we did an opinion survey because the school board wanted more and more information about what employees were thinking. And so we distributed to employees in May, and we wanted to understand their perspectives on what attracts and keeps employees at Virginia Beach City School Board, I mean, school system, public schools, on what the competitiveness, how they saw the competitors of compensation, and any suggestions, kind of like while we're talking to them, any suggestions for improving recruitment and retention. We had 13 multiple-choice questions. We had three open-ended questions and four demographic questions. What was really critical in this survey, and I'll show you in a second the incredibly high response rate we got, we told employees this was anonymous, was confidential, nobody would be identified, and so please feel free to share your opinions in an open, confidential manner. We had 62% participation, which is incredibly high and more than statistically significant. And we're very happy with the results of this. So what I'm going to give you now is an overview. We actually have, in the big survey report, the study broken down by all the instructional, all the different groups, instructional, custodial food service, and so forth. But here, we're going to give you the overview of what we found. So why did people join BBCPS? Reputation, and we talked about reputation earlier. I know it came up from one of the board members. That is a critical component as to why people come here, the reputation. Location, I guess that's Teach at the Beach is part of that, but the location or the amount of commuting time. Benefits, and benefits came up in a couple of different ways, but 31% of respondents said that they joined for benefits. Then, of course, we can see the other ones that are pretty close, schedule, personal ties, type of work, security stability, children, family members attending a Virginia Beach school. But basically, people are joining because of your reputation as a quality system, location, and benefits. Salary offer, because this came up in conversation, and future salary potential was chosen by less than 10% of the employees, which we thought was interesting. Educators and administrators were more likely to select reputation. Staff were likely to select schedule and benefit. Why do we stay here? Benefits, interestingly enough, location, job security, and work schedules, hours. That's why people are staying here. Salary level, again, was chosen by less than 10% of employees. And here, educators, specialists, and TAs were most likely to select coworkers and colleagues. So, and that makes sense, because these are people who are in a building, they work closely together, they see each other every day, it's probably their social network to some degree or another, but that's the cohesive community. So I think that's why we're seeing that. So why do people leave? Better salary. 69% of employees are saying that they leave, well, they're not leaving, they're the ones answering the survey, but at least their perception or what they hear from others is that people are leaving for higher salary, which is kind of different. And future salary growth or potential. So that actually informs us when we think about, and Dr. Spence and I were talking about this earlier, how can we build in future growth if that's a reason, you know, people are leaving? So it's not just about the salary, we're seeing that, but it's important also to look at future growth. Management at the school or department, work environment, and, and some of leaving for better benefits, which was interesting. Salary was the top driver of turnover by all employee groups. Everybody, custodians, bus drivers, teachers, TAs, administrators, that's their first reason for leaving. But management was also in the top three for most of the groups. So there are some issues there to be looking at. Perceived competitiveness. Now, this is kind of interesting. You can see that the no opinions are on the far right in the gray. Worse than most is the orange. The teal-blue is about average, and better than most is on the far left. Just looking at salary, you still have 47% saying that it's about average, but yet 39% saying that it's worse. Health benefits, about average. Career advancement, about average. Pay time off, about average, which is pretty good. Retirement benefits are good. But I love this professional development and learning, and I bet that's something that keeps people here, too, and kudos to who runs that department, because we've got 10, 24% saying better than most, which I think is really, really good. So who runs this? Who's running this program? What? Okay. Is she here? Well, somebody, please, share this with her, because you can see this is the one that's outstanding in terms of better than most in every single area.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So we just recently improved the health benefits significantly, correct? When, when does that go into effect? So, so this is based upon kind of our old compensation...
Yes.
...model of benefits, so we have to factor that in.
I think that's a really good point. It's funny, I was telling Dr. Spence this earlier. When I took an Uber from the airport, it turned out that the driver, wife worked in the school system, and we were talking about different issues, including being at the top of the scale, and also, but he was raving about the insurance benefit. And even though, I swear to God, I mean, he's talking about this to me. So that was good to hear. I don't even think I knew that, but he said she's going to save like $400 a month, which is crazy.
So speaking to Mrs. Manning's point, what timeframe, what time period was the survey?
It went out in May.
Kind of, yeah, I mean, the official, official word on the health was probably just, just after this, I'm thinking.
And you're absolutely correct, Ms. Rye. Ever since the communication went out from Dr. Spence around our employees saving between 43 and 53% on their monthly premium cost, I will tell you, we actually received some very positive phone calls and emails in, in HR, and I assume that's what your driver was referencing.
Yes.
That's a huge cost savings to our employees.
I didn't even know you were doing it. And he was like, wow, what a great system, blah, blah, blah. I venture to guess this should enhance. Yeah, and, and we do surveys like this like every year or two years, and then you can compare, which is always gratifying. So, um, food service, staff, and specialists most likely to review pay rates is worse when you look at it, break it up. So competitiveness of the work environment and culture. Support from administrators or management, worse than most for 21%, better than most 15%. Support from parents, families, and communities, overall cultural work environment, and physical work environment facilities. So whoever runs your facilities, is that person here? Raise your hand, please.
No, he had to step out.
Boy, these people are stepping out when I'm giving them kudos. And it's appreciated. Yeah, please tell that person as well. Support from administrators or management is something I'd work on, and you'll see that in some of the comments, as well as from parents and families. All right, so that's the data, data. Let's talk about the open-ended questions we asked. Aside from raising pay, so we're pulling out pay here, which we said was an ongoing priority, so see if we can separate that out. Any specific ideas you have to attract new employees, to recruit and retain? What are some ideas you have to make that even better for us? And what is one change the administration could maintain, could make to ensure Virginia Beach City Public Schools remains a great place to work? Really important questions. We had a zillion, almost, responses. People wrote. We had over 5,000 comments. Now, some of those might have been the same people, over 5,000 comments. And by the way, in the summary, where we broke it out by employee groups as well, I think we sent HR, what was it, 102-page report, or? Yes. 102-page report with details by each group. So people had something to say, and again, I think it's because of the confidentiality that was assured, and people shared the good, the bad, and the ugly, to be honest. So, yeah, and Judy and Cheryl are nodding as well. So this is what we heard, how to improve recruitment and retention. Student behavior. Student behavior, which has gotten worse and worse in the last years. Student behavior came up heads above number one. I mean, we didn't count every comment, so I can't say, you know, 482 people, but many, many, many comments like to student behavior and wanting assistance, wanting support when interacting with parents about these issues. And they're feeling they are not getting the support. And they're feeling they are not getting the support from admin to work on behavior problems, that either it's ignored or it's, the support just isn't there. And it doesn't just mean support from, you know, an administrator doing something. It also means not enough support in the school itself in terms of help. You know, somebody who might be responsible for discipline or somebody who's responsible for monitoring classrooms or a number of other ways to look at it. But that was head and shoulders above everything else. Behavior and discipline. Number two, which wasn't too far behind, I might add, was the amount of work. Employees of all, you know, parts of the organization talked about unreasonable workload, added responsibilities, larger class sizes, elevated expectations, and staffing shortages. And I know you're doing your darndest to recruit and retain, but those were all talked about as the key drivers of turnover. So definitely something that is really important to keep in mind, which is to say it's not just about the money. There are many other factors that are driving turnover at the school's district. These two were very close and are very much allied with each other. Respect and listening. Lot of comments wanted dignity, respect, trust, appreciation. Not a lot in the way of recognition, even small things of recognition. Even having an administrator or a principal talk to school teachers about what they're doing or school administrators or school support staff. They're not feeling recognized. They're not feeling heard. They're not feeling appreciated. Also a driver of turnover. And listening, which is very close. Wanting more two-way communication, wanting to know what's going on, wanting to have their voices be heard and know that their concerns will be taken seriously. A number of comments focused on, you know, sharing a concern or an issue and it being ignored. Or, I don't know if this is even worse. Somebody got, mhm, 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 I'll take care of that. And then never hearing anything. So like the voices go off in the wind. Any questions about these? Mrs. Wright?
Mine's more a comment. I wish we had a baseline of these four categories a year ago or two years ago. And I'm not suggesting, because they probably, they still would have manifested themselves. But I think we all have to acknowledge, because what we were told is even this year was harder than the year before when it was mostly virtual, the return and still the uncertainty with COVID and the tremendous stress levels. You know, so that just needs to be acknowledged. But it's still, but it's still important.
Yeah, very important. People talked about COVID. People talked about the mask mandates, up and down. People talked about the influence from the public on, potentially on the curriculum. All sorts of issues came up, you know, in these. It was a high-stress period of time. And you can do this again in two years or one year and see what it looks like. But baseline is critical. This could be your baseline.
Yeah, if I could just follow up to Ms. Wright. We do have a baseline on student behavior. We had a survey right before COVID hit. We had an ad hoc discipline committee that was formed. And we did do a survey on the teachers and student behavior was a huge issue then. And so we could compare that survey with what, what you did as well.
Although the questions were probably different. But yeah, could get a feel for it. I don't know how that one came out. Other comments or issues?
Yeah.
Yeah, teachers have been talking about this for a long time. They're dealing with way too much discipline in the classrooms. When there's a discipline issue, that's what you have administration down the hall for. They need to be able to call them, come get them. Administration needs to deal with that so teachers can teach.
Yes, we heard that.
But they've been saying this, and now we seem surprised.
No comment? Yes, yes. And that is important. Other comments, concerns, questions? Yes.
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, this doesn't surprise me. Where do you, okay, so, so on the slide nine that you said 69% employees leave because of salary. And this came from the, from the?
You said slide nine?
Yeah, or it's slide nine on my page.
Oh.
Okay, so, and then this came from the 62% of the people that responded to the survey. So these are, this is not, this number is actually not from exit surveys. This is just from the anonymous survey that you sent out.
Let me, yes. Yeah, all right, I don't know which number it was.
Keep going. Reasons employees leave Virginia Beach, right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so these aren't actually from people that actually have left and said, I left because the pay wasn't high enough.
No, no, and I talked about that to see if we?
Perception.
Yes.
Okay.
And not just their perception, it's what other employees are telling them. So it's like, I'm leaving because I got offered $10,000 more to go?
And how many of this percentage, or do you have the data? I'm leaving because I'm getting 2,000 more in this educational institution? Or I'm leaving because I'm getting 20,000 more in private practice? Or I'm leaving because I'm getting 100,000 more to sell pharmaceuticals?
That's probably true.
Yeah, exactly. So do we have?
No.
Okay. And then how do you divide this into, I'm leaving now? I could retire in four years, but I'm leaving, yeah, because the pay? I can get paid better somewhere else. And frankly, I've had it because of the working conditions, the behavior, the work culture, the amount of work. And so I'm, I'm checking out because this is like maxed me out. And yeah, I can get paid better and not have to deal with this.
Right.
Do you know where, I mean, like, how, how do you draw the line between just 70% pay? But a lot of that has to do with this page?
Yes, we don't know.
You don't know, okay.
And that is something that has not been collected in, in exit interviews. And let me also tell you that if you're doing an exit interview with an HR person or somebody in the school system, people are not always honest. Because number one, they don't have to say. Number two, nobody wants to burn bridges. At least that's what I find. You don't want to bring bridges. So you say, I'm leaving because of X. And so you always have an open door to come back. So unless you're doing it in an anonymous way, like we did here, for instance, you're not going to get the answers. And I would say that all are true. Some of them are leaving because of money. And some of them are leaving for the work environment and not being heard. And some of them are like, I can't have another kid in my classroom. And some are leaving for all of the above. And I'd say one probably catalyzes the other. So maybe you're miserable at work and you can't take much more. And then you start looking for a job. And then you get paid more. I'm seeing some heads nodding in the back. So that's my hypothesis. Other questions, comments? It's not easy, is it? Oh, and I might want to add, not only you, not the only school system facing this, by the way. Many, many of our clients in every sector of the economy does. And I might also want to add that I really admire you, by the way, for even commissioning this survey because it's like putting a microscope or a magnifying glass. That's it, it's putting a magnifying glass and, and stuff comes up. And that's not unusual. So I admire you for looking at yourselves in this manner so that you can make changes in the future going forward. Okay. Got this. All right, next steps. Share survey results with employees. Maybe some variation of this, not less detail, maybe a little more detail. Yeah, probably a little more detail than you all need at the school board level. We firmly believe that if employees are asked for their opinion, that they took the time, 62% of them took the time to complete it. They should hear what, what you, what you decide. And frankly, I personally would love for them to hear what you're going to do about it. What action plans do you have? Even if it's forming task forces to look into each of those four areas. Whatever it might be, but I'd love to hear us talk about what are the next steps as we go forward for employees to see. It's not just sitting on a shelf. Okay? Then finalize the compensation philosophy. Well, that is a next step. So I guess you've heard enough about that for today. And confirm the methodology, which we have. But maybe we can talk a little bit about what you want to do about the findings. Mrs. Wright?
Well, staff is here to weigh in too. But there are a lot of different moving parts in the division right now. I mean, we do have a mental health task force, which touches on a myriad of issues. We have and will be hearing more, I guess, in our afternoon session about an enhanced employee input process. So there's the listening piece there. Other colleagues, I'm sure, will weigh in. But workload is acknowledged. And I think there's a lot of different things happening with that. But there's also the present reality and the way shortages were partly addressed this year, including having administrators going into the buildings to teach one day a week from, from the school admin building. But it was, again, just to make the broader point that as opposed to, and I appreciate staff input too, as well as colleague input, as opposed to, I understand from the survey that these developed into these four areas. But I see a lot of things going on that overlap with some of these. But not to say there's not more that can be done, so.
Comments on what to do with these results? Any other comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to see a task force formed. We had one before on student behavior, but?
What happened to it?
Well, we had results that we, that we got from it. And then COVID hit completely, and so?
And that changed our lives.
Here we are. But also, I'd like to see a task force on, maybe a couple of us along with, if we can possibly get it, some teachers' input on workload.
Yes.
How, what can we do to address the workload? Is there any suggestions? Because a lot of times, you know, you ask teachers and they go, you know, we're asked to do this, 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 and this. But some of it is redundant or they don't see the reason for the, for being asked to do this particular thing. So I'd like to, I'd like to know, you know, is there any way we can reduce some of their workload? Part of it, though, has to do with class size and lack of staff.
Increasing staff.
Right, increasing staff. We've heard that. And of course, we had the problem all this past year with, you know, not having enough staff. So people, other people had to step up to fill in, substitute. And that was the reason why administration got involved. The best thing that happened to us during all of this was administration getting involved and having to substitute in some of the classrooms. Teachers have said for years, if they, if we could only have administration come and substitute, they would, they would see what's going on and, and, you know, so.
Good.
I think that happened. And it was, we had more positive comments from teachers who said, thank you for administration stepping up and, and?
Yeah, people like to see that. And they like to see their administration. I know of principals who like almost never get out of their office, usually because they're dealing with problems. But teachers want to see that. Yeah, Ms. Manning?
So, yeah, I've been sharing with the board for years. And with administration, my concerns around student behavior. And we did have that ad hoc committee that got cut, basically got cut short. So we didn't really get any results out of that. But I guess I'm looking at next steps here. And now that we, we have more information, we have your survey, staff has your survey.
Oh, yeah.
And staff understands what the problems are or at least can look in, you know, what the concerns are. Staff can look into this. Perhaps the next approach is the board sets a timeline and we get an update from staff, you know, say in a couple of months. Okay, what is staff doing to address these, these concerns? You know, so that's an idea that I have where, you know, we, we tell staff, okay, here, here are the concerns. Take a look at this. Let's dive deeper and find out what solutions we can come up with. I do know, you know, one thing that I believe is causing a lot of problems in the classroom is cell phones. And we do have that on our agenda next month, I think, coming up pretty soon, to discuss. So I think that's an action item that is coming up that I think could help that, that situation. But just looking at, I mean, I think that this is something that staff needs to be taking action on, not necessarily the school board.
So may I weigh in on that? So I appreciate that, and I totally agree. And I, I just think it's important that we not suggest that staff hasn't been working on this, right?
Very good point.
You know, I mean, yes, we have student behavior issues. Yes, we've had student behavior issues. We've been talking for years about the escalation in student behavior issues. Talk to any one of our principals, particularly our elementary principals. Talk to our kindergarten teachers, they'll talk to you about this. We've got behaviors that people have not seen in their careers that are, that are a direct result of what's happening in our communities, right? And so it isn't like, you know, we just stopped disciplining children and, you know, just, you know, the behaviors are the same as they've always been and we just started ignoring them. I, I would hate for the community to have that impression. And in fact, I don't think the community writ large has that impression. They understand our teachers and our administrators work hard at this. There are just some really significant challenges. I mean, stuff like I have never heard in my career. I mean, first of all, there were, there were things happening prior to COVID that I had not heard in my career. And we were seeing like de-escalating behaviors of, you know, kids in kindergarten destroying classrooms. And of course, then you get told by the state, well, you can't restrain that child and you can't seclude that child. And, and not, not that I'm wagging fingers at people, but, you know, there, so there are other things that we have to try to figure out. And the board knows we have brought in a significant number of behavior intervention specialists who are doing a great job in our schools to support our teachers. The board knows that we've done a lot of things to try to tackle behavior issues. And I agree and concur, there's a lot more happening relative to behaviors. It would be good for, for us to, and, and so I think we should come back and have this conversation. But I also think it's important that we acknowledge that there are real issues right now with behavior that are not like pre-COVID. There are students who are not socialized for two years, who were not in our buildings, who came back into our buildings. I've had high school teachers tell me they're teaching middle school students because they've never had, those kids have never been in a high school, don't know how to behave in a high school. I had, shockingly, Dr. Robertson and I were talking with somebody from another school division who said, we're teaching second graders. We're potty-training second graders.
Oh, my.
And I thought, that can't be. And then Don said, yeah, I've heard that from some of our teachers, that we're potty-training students who are in first and second grade in our schools because we do a lot of that when they're with us in pre-K, but we didn't have them. And, and so there are, and, and of course, we know that trauma exacerbates behavior, that anxiety induced by trauma creates significant behavioral challenges. All the Aces research out there tells you that. And so I just think it's incredibly important that we all agree, yes, we have to continue to work on these issues, but that we don't like point fingers and say, well, gosh, people have just sat back on their, on their heels and just ignored behavior issues for years. That's just patently false. And so we're working hard all the time on these issues. And, you know, we want to make sure that, that if anybody out there is saying that or has that impression, that they know that's just not true. And so I totally agree. We need to, we need to come back and talk to the board about what else we may need to be doing. I think a significant part of this is the work of the mental health task force. But also, I think there are other interventions that people are calling for. When you hear these teachers say, I need more help, a lot of times they're saying? When you hear these teachers say, I need more help, a lot of times they're saying, hey, can we do more? Is there another base program? And I'm not sure that's the answer, but, you know, we need more behavior interventionists. All we have is one between three schools or whatever it is. And I think those are all things that we have to talk about as a group. And so, yeah, I agree, Mrs. Manning, and I think, you know, I said yesterday afternoon that we should be taking a note of other things that we need to add to our quarterly forecasts, and so we'll find an appropriate time to put that on the quarterly forecast and have staff come back and talk more about not only what we have been doing that we know is positive, but also where we continue to see our challenges and what we think we may need to do next.
That makes sense. I see a green light. All the other lights have been red. Does that mean you want to talk, Ms. Riggs?
Yeah.
Good, 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 okay.
But I think I can't talk.
It won't.
Well, you've got people in front of you.
She's in line.
Just like it's next.
Yep. And so
I didn't even see that.
Yeah, and then me.
It's on our screen, it's not fair to you because you don't get to see.
Oh, wait, before you speak, I want to make one comment, and I totally agree with what Dr. Spence said, of course, and we all know that you've been doing work in this area and it's not a new phenomenon, it's just exacerbated. But I want to mention that it's not only the teachers who talk about this, heard it from probably every transportation person, so I just want to make sure that you don't think that it's only teachers. Okay, just because we've been talking about classroom. Ms. Owens?
Yep, you stole a little bit of my thunder there. One of my things was going to be remembering that these, this feedback is from our teachers, our cafeteria staff, our staff, our support staff, our office folks.
Everybody.
Everybody, it's coming from across the board. And while I am in agreement with Ms. Manning and Dr. Spence that we want to support our administrators in taking action on these things and reporting back to us and kind of working on that and seeing the progress, I think there are some things as a board that we can commit to and just be aware of. When we're seeing workload as one of the top two concerns as a board, we need to be mindful of the expectations when we're looking at different new programs and new pathways. And the programs that we just got for externships is wonderful and I know it's needed because state level requirement, but as a board, we have to commit to funding and padding staff to help take on those new tasks that are going to come with that program instead of just giving additional tracking and responsibilities to our staff when they are saying our workload is overwhelming and, you know, not manageable, but looking at the respect one. And I know there's a lot of things that go with that, but as a board, we had, I don't know, fifteen-plus principals come to a meeting and ask for support. As a board, we need to, you know, commit to at least discussing their concerns and providing some feedback. Doesn't mean that you agree or you disagree, but people need to, our staff need to feel heard and we talked about it and here's what we decided and here's why we decided it. So I think, yes, it's a school level issue, but it's also board level things that we need to be committing to do so that staff knows we got the survey, we heard it, and here's how we're doing our part, and then that parallel process should be happening all the way down the line.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I would love a workshop on what we are doing with this first bullet, student behavior, and what we can do. Also with the workload, yeah, I mean, when I'm talking to teachers, it's always, Carolyn, I knew what I was going to make as a teacher, but I didn't know I was going to have to, and then they just, you know, go with ten things. I didn't know that I was going to be doing work at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning or night. I didn't know I was going to have to deal with the kindergarten throwing a chair across the room and biting me. I didn't know, you know, the same thing. I didn't know that I was going to have to, you know, not take a day off because to do my sub plans, it takes me two or three hours to prepare to get those lesson plans. I didn't know that I was going to have to go through thousands of resources to pick my, you know, what I'm going to do at the elementary level. So kind of exactly too with the workload, Dr. Spence, if we could have what we've done to try to reduce that, like even yesterday, they said they were automating some of our, for some of the new stuff that we're going to do with the, what David Dins showed us, it was great because they're automating some of that so that the teachers don't have to carry on that extra burden of keeping track of internships, you know, and all that stuff. So what do we automate? What have we done to help with lesson plans, specific lesson plans, instead of reaching through, you know, tons of resources? What have we, you know, is there anything that we're doing to like, this, you know, for substitutes, if you're out, this is like a generic plan at elementary? I mean, I know you can't because of pay scene, but just some of those things that we've done and what can we do just to relieve the hours and hours and hours of workload beyond the school day? If we could get that in a workshop as well?
Yes, ma'am. We definitely can. And I actually, somebody mentioned a sort of, you know, working with teachers and the task force, I've actually talked to our staff about this, that we need to pull together a group of teachers.
Teachers, exactly.
Kind of a big group across the district to kind of ask this question, like, okay, so workload is an issue? Because we've seen this and we've talked about this. Workload is an issue, so how can we help? What barriers can, because we know we've got to keep people on board and the only way we're going to do that is if we can help people feel good about the work they're doing and if workload is an issue, what can we do to alleviate concerns about workload so that, you know, without compromising the fact that we've still got to teach children? So I agree with you and our intention is to actually do that, and so I would ask for the latitude to get that moving and then we'll figure out a time to come back and talk about that.
And really
I will say, sorry, go ahead.
Really, like, because the teachers can tell you, you know, specifics, like this teacher the other day, you know, generic plans for when I'm taking a day off at the elementary level, that'll save me two hours. And then she, you know, she had like four or five, just really, that seemed very doable specifics. And so these teachers will be able to say, and then we can just, you know, start doing those. That's a specific solution that the teacher has given us, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a good, a good conversation can be had around those things and then we can try to figure out, so what amongst those are workable? I'll tell you this, which is just, it's not an aside, it's an interesting point. When we had the opportunity to give teachers Mondays for planning and collaboration during the pandemic, when we took that away, we heard a lot about workload. Because I think one of the key issues is time and schedule.
Exactly.
And, you know, I don't, most teachers are willing to do the work if they are given the time to do the work, and where you hear the complaints is I have to do it outside of the contract time. And so, you know, I think the board probably is going to need to have some serious discussions around our schedule and how we do things. And, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but I think it'll be interesting to hear what our teachers tell us about that. So we will come back with that and I appreciate that suggestion.
Excellent. Ms. Reed?
Well, first of all, I want to respond to what you said about the workload and the teachers, Dr. Spence. I know it's been, I retired in 2012, okay? I remember hating Sundays, absolutely hating a Sunday. My whole weekend had been taken up with planning, still is, even more so. I mean, every night, I would stay in school for a long time later because I did other things besides just the teaching a lot in the school. But I just, and I know that it's even, and that was in 2012, it's much worse now. So I get that. And again, I want to emphasize employee input process.
Yes, good.
We're all talking about employee input process.
But not only input.
Exactly.
And action planning.
And that is where, years ago, where we got a lot done for scheduling and things that could be done for teachers because they had a voice and, because they're there, they know what kind of things, and they, it's not like they don't want to do less, they want to do the top teaching that they've always done, but let them have a seat at that table because they know what's going on. And they're smart with what ideas that they can come about. So I think they'd be very helpful. But I did want to say, as PRC chair, I just want you guys to know, we are going to be discussing cell phones and there has been some things that have come up to handle that. So I just wanted to, we're not going to get into that discussion now.
No, no, let's hold that.
But do know that that is coming and there has been, there's policy that's going on with it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Paula, I appreciate this time. Dr. Spence, I appreciate you bringing that up because that was on my list to see if we could reach out to retired teachers from all grade levels and bring them back to ask them to assess us as a division as to what we are doing and the practices that we're doing as well. And I know that this is one of the all major priorities that's up there about school psychologists and social workers, one of the main things we need money for as well. But I really wanted to say, I remember coming in and you put together, Dr. Spence, a disciplinary task force, and I know some of those things you did implement, but it would be, it would be good if we could get a piece of a workshop or a workshop on some of the results and just review that process. And it would be impressive if you could get some of those individuals that served on that task force to come back and assess us, to let us know if we did the works that they put forth and that they wanted to see with this division as well. That was a very impressive disciplinary task force. I had the opportunity to go to a couple of the sessions that you had, and I was impressed with the individuals that you had on that task force as well. But I want to go back to the theme for improving recruitment and retention, and the one thing that jumped out at me was respect and what they named. And the last past two years, our teachers, our staff, our librarians, you name it, they were marginalized and their professionalism was put into question, they were raped across the coals, and they were literally saying they could not take the community and some of their support staff at what was being said. I will put this to my colleagues, how many of you have walked up to one of them and said, thank you for standing in the line of fire? Thank you for staying here. Thank you for the good job that you've done. Thank you for staying there and taking all of that, all of that that was thrown at you at the time. It was rough, it was hard. And all they asked in this respect thing, saying, we just want to have, want you to give us, respect us, trust, they lost trust in, in the people that said, that supported them, because some of the ones that said supported them were behind the people pushing them, marginalizing our staff. It was a hard job for them to stand in the gap as things changed, sometimes weekly, sometimes daily. But they stood in the gap. And every time you see, that's just my philosophy, every time you see one of the teachers or the staff or whoever, thank you. That's all they ask, just thank you for the job that you've done. But respect, that stood out to me. And sometimes all they need is a thank you and we appreciate the job that you're doing.
Thank you for your comment. Anything else? Yes?
I see that Williams is in the queue, but, oh, okay.
I'm sorry, am I doing something wrong by?
Nope, you're doing it great.
You can't see this, but we can, we know who.
Yep. The other thing I wanted to mention super brief is the listening theme here. I think we're seeing this data and one of the things that you expressed was you feel like you were able to get more openness, more transparency from our staff members because of the ability to assure them it's going to be anonymous and it's going to be taken to where it needs to go. And I feel like staff has been, and they are asking for a better two-way communication, I'm sure with administration, but also with the board. We talked about it before and decided that it maybe wasn't a good idea to have something where staff members would be able to communicate in a more anonymous fashion because we wanted to make sure we were creating the relationships where people didn't feel like they needed to be anonymous. But for people to have to leave to feel comfortable enough to share what they need to share shouldn't be the only way we're getting information. And if information is flowing through anonymous surveys at times, maybe we need to just bring back the discussion of how can our employees, how can our staff members communicate with us in a way that they feel safe to do so and share this information and we don't have to wait three years for the survey to come back, for somebody else to do it anonymously, that we have a system in place where they can do that with us as a board and be able to have some things addressed and feel like they're heard. So just something to
And I would ask you to halt that thought till the afternoon session on employee input and we'll revisit it then.
Okay.
Right, that was going to be my suggestion because we do have enhanced employee input process we're going to be discussing later this afternoon. So I just
Yeah, I want to add something that nobody asked for my opinion on. I have very mixed feelings about staff going directly to boards. So I just wanted to put that out there.
So you're right, sometimes, but we do need to hear from them sometimes as well. But the respect part that Ms. Felton touched on, I don't want that to be misconstrued, that teachers, yes, there are, there are times that teachers do not feel respected from their superiors, but also from parents.
Yes.
And that was a huge
We heard a lot about parents.
That was a huge, huge thing that came out of COVID. In the beginning of COVID, teachers were revered, oh my God, I can't believe, you know, that, you know, they were the most revered, but then over time, the teachers were the ones who took the brunt of parents' resentment of children having to be home.
Yes.
It was just one of those things that evolved. And so now, you know, this past year, we were back, we were back in school full time and, but, but the teachers did not feel any respect for the most part. They would send notes home about behavior that was happening and they would get derogatory notes back to them. I mean, those are the things that were happening. It was like, you know, who are you to try to correct my child in school? I mean, that's what, those are the kind of notes that they were getting back. And so lack of respect, not only from, from their, their superiors or their administrators, but also from, from parents. And, and so, you know, gone are the days when you send a note home and the punishment is more at home than it is at school. Gone are those days. But people talk about that and that's a reality that's happened because it evolved over COVID or not.
Yep, and it's a reality nationwide. I just want to
Yeah.
This is not unique.
I don't want to put the full blame on parents, it's not, I'm not trying to blame parents in general, but it's just, it's just overall our society. And it goes right down to, you know, lack of pay, lack of respect, all of that is the huge big picture of teachers and why people don't want to go into the teaching profession because they realize that teachers don't have the respect of society in general, so.
It's not like it used to be.
A little time check, Paula.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
We're down to our final few minutes of this session, but then we're segueing right into staffing challenges and solutions.
Yeah, so we have four minutes left. Mrs. Wright, is there any kind of resolution or something you want to put out here?
I think, without getting specific, my takeaway from my time with you is that, and we've talked about, Mrs. Wright and I have talked about government and city jobs and their lifestyles, right? Like you were, you would get good benefits, a retirement, and it was, as Carolyn put it, even for her husband, a choice between private sector and government work. But I just think as a board, we have to be cognizant that COVID really changed that.
Yes.
And now our competition isn't just Norfolk and Chesapeake and Chesterfield, it's also the private sector and the opportunity to work from home and to do something different. And so I think we need to remember all of that too as, as, as we muddle through all of this and discuss, you know, how we of this and, and discuss, you know, how we proceed. It's, it's difficult to compete with private sector jobs and.
You're right. And that's why we're going to be collecting data from that published survey.
Yeah. And I think.
Yeah. Anything else as we wrap up? Mrs. Ry, is there a need for something overall or are we good?
Well, I, I think a lot of this is going to get continued in the next two sessions we have.
Good.
So, so I commend the staff for recognizing and piecing, there was some rearrangement in the retreat schedule in the past few weeks. And we're seeing now that how all this, all that we're discussing today is connected. These are not just isolated sessions. So I think we'll have a better sense by the end of the day of, you know, how all this pulls together.
Great. Well, I thank you very much for your time and attention this whole morning. And I wish you great luck with the rest of the retreat. I'm going to stay for an additional session because I know it's going to feed into this, which will also inform the compensation study. So I thank you for your time and I'll see you in a couple months.
Thank you. So with that, we have Ms. Woodhouse back with us to discuss for, to discuss the, the related topic of staffing challenges and solutions.
Wonderful. And thank you again, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members and Dr. Spence. Now, you know, as the HR personnel have to always put in a plug. So for our viewing audience who was just sitting out and listening to the wonderful conversations that we were having, just know we are a school division that embraces our data. We recognize that we have challenges, but we also have equally a number of successes. We have great children, great staff, and so we are still hiring. So come join our team. Don't want you to think it's just doom and gloom. We've got some great things taking place. But we do recognize that we have our challenges and none of our challenges scare us away. You know, I was sitting here thinking, I'm a math person by nature. I love numbers. People used to always say, "God, I can't believe you like that." So we don't shy away from our data. And so come join this fabulous team and help us be a part of the solution. And we recognize that you have choices and hope Virginia Beach continues to be your number one choice. Now, with that being said, I'm going to lead into, introduce to you Ms. Anne Glenn Zelsneck, Coordinator for Recruitment and Retention with the Department of Human Resources. Anne is going to share with you this morning in collaboration with Mr. Delaney, our Chief Schools Officer, some of our national challenges that we face and some of our suggestions and solutions as well. And at the end, because it is a, a little shorter of a presentation, at the end, we look forward to, again, having a conversation around not just what we can do in terms of lobbying our legislation, but also what we can do here in Virginia Beach. So I'll turn it over to Anne.
Good afternoon. For today's agenda includes the national and state market conditions, staffing challenges and solutions that can move us towards recruiting additional staff within our ranks while retaining teachers in the future. The Department of Human Resources continues to work with school administrators to identify highly qualified staff for the 2022-2023 school year. The U.S. Department of Education provides a report on teacher shortages in the United States. The District of Columbia was included in the data reporting. However, four states have not supplied any information to the U.S. Department of Education at this time. The graph shows the total number of states reporting shortages in the areas identified for the 2022-2023 school year, which mirrors the teacher shortages we are experiencing today. Later in this presentation, I will review the current critical teacher shortage areas in the state of Virginia. The teacher shortage continues to impact the applicant pool across the nation and in Virginia. Fewer teachers are choosing teaching as a career. Attrition, leaving the teaching field, or mobility, moving to other states or divisions, are affecting the retention of teachers. These shortages directly impact the ability to hire teachers in specific areas such as career and technology education, elementary education pre-K to six, secondary math, special education, and world languages, which represent the top five critical shortage areas in the state of Virginia. Lastly, the challenge of finding affordable housing is also a factor, including here in Virginia Beach. This graph shown in previous board reports continues to have significant relevance to schools across the nation. School divisions are experiencing shortages across all grade levels and subject areas. The light blue line represents the projected estimated supply of teachers through 2025. The black dotted line represents the number of teachers currently needed to fill vacancies across the nation. The 2021 Title II Report provides information regarding individuals enrolled in teacher preparation programs during the 2019-2020 school year. In Virginia, we saw enrollment numbers in teacher preparation programs decline by 1,670 teacher candidates. Between the 2018-2019 and 2019 and 20 school years, the number of individuals who completed their teacher preparation program declined by 6.7%. Keep in mind that the number of program completers does not include or indicate that these teacher candidates applied for a teaching license in Virginia. Now let's review Virginia's critical shortage teaching endorsement areas. In Virginia, the top 10 critical shortage areas are listed in the table. Elementary education, special education, middle school, career and technical education, and math have remained the top five shortage areas over the past 10 years. Compensation for teachers compared to professions with similar educational requirements continues to be a concern. The National Education Association reports that although progress has been made, inflation is impacting teachers because of the wage gap. Managing the many facets of the past few years, such as COVID, teacher burnout, and lack of professional respect, has some teachers considering other career paths. This in conjunction with low enrollment in teacher preparation programs is noteworthy. Unlike any other profession, educators work and support students academically, socially, and emotionally. The following headlines are an example of what school divisions across the nation are experiencing. Here in Virginia Beach, another primary driver in consideration for staffing is student behavior, school climate, substitute shortage, just lack of time to collaborate with and work with peers, support after the first year of teaching, and work-life balance. So what can our division do to retain staff and provide support? We can continue to bring awareness to the state, local, and federal governments as well as the community at large about the need to increase teacher salaries to remain competitive with other professionals. The Office of Professional Growth and Innovation is also providing support to staff who need to pass required assessments to obtain a 10-year renewable teaching license. They have purchased an online tutoring platform and shared this information with identified staff. Expanding our partnerships with local universities and colleges will increase the teacher pipeline. We can share information about our employment opportunities, including becoming a substitute. Explore remote work opportunities for staff. Finally, seek funding for tuition reimbursement and apply for grants to support our recruitment and retention efforts. Legislatively, a review of the current reciprocity processes for licensed teachers from another state would ease the transition to becoming a teacher in Virginia. Only eight states offer full teacher license reciprocity for all eligible, fully licensed teachers. And these states, fully licensed out-of-state teachers, regardless of experience, are immediately eligible to receive a standard teaching license and are subject to few or no additional requirements. Expand the critical shortage list. This would enable more retirees to be rehired. Continue to review the need for licensure extensions. Expand the Teacher Loan Forgiveness and Virginia Teaching Scholarship Loan Program for staff who are seeking a degree in education. The Department of Human Resources is committed to working with the school administrators and all departments to meet their staffing needs. Thank you. And this concludes the HR portion of this presentation. Mr. Matthew Delaney, Chief Schools Officer from the Department of School Leadership, will provide some additional information regarding this topic.
Thank you, Anne. Just want to share with the board and the viewing community some of the things that we typically do across schools this time of year around our staffing concerns. Share, probably build off a little bit of what we did yesterday. Share some things that we envision we may have to do in the long term. Some would be short-term solutions, but others that we're looking at innovative ways to, to resolve problems, which brings us back a little bit to the conversation that we had with you on distance learning. We talked about the opportunities for students, but we also need to look at that from an opportunity to maximize our staffing. Usually have a clicker. All right. So as you look at the slide here, what you'll see at the top is we have, we have constant feedback loops with principals, with central support.
I'm sorry, I walked off with that.
Thank you. We have a gift bag for you at the end. You didn't need to take it now. We'll give you something when you go. Just want to assure all of you that are, you're kind of listening to this part of the presentation, much of what you're hearing are things that have been ongoing for years with our principals, with our HR staff, with Department of School Leadership. So we're really kind of bringing you behind the curtain of a lot of the pressures that schools face this time of year, putting together a master schedule that best serves their students and best serves the teaching staff that they have. What they often are doing at this time of year is we're really looking at their schedules to make adjustments to student and teacher schedules to maximize the staffing. Sometimes at the secondary level, we can expect a few cases where teachers have more than 150 students on the traditional AB schedule. We'll see that maybe decrease a little bit as a result of going to a new schedule. Those teachers that do have more than 150 students are compensated for those additional students as it comes up throughout the year. We may have teachers on the four-by-four that are above 90. We want to make sure to the best of our ability that we have students in front of a highly qualified, certified teacher. And principals right now, when they look at their master schedule, they're trying to maximize that efficiency. Principals continually look to work to shift allocations within a building to meet a specific need. I get emails over the last few days of saying, "Hey, I no longer need this position. Can I shift this allocation to social studies because I see a need there now? I, I found a solution somewhere else to allow that to occur." That shares a little bit about that feedback loop. DOSL Directors and Dr. Myers-Dobbs from OPEC are constantly reviewing our enrollment numbers. So if enrollment numbers are lower and they don't need those allocations, where can we potentially shift those allocations to another school that may be in need of those allocations? That's been somewhat of a common practice on the elementary school level. It's not been a common practice in high school or necessarily in special education, but we do see that as a potential need moving forward. You know, it's a lot of heartburn when we have these conversations, especially after you hear what we just heard over the last couple of hours. But we also need to deal with the reality of our situations as well that are sitting in front of us. I'm always amazed every year when Anne does the presentation of how few people are enrolled in college programs. And certainly we understand that that necessarily isn't going to improve in the next five years when we feel like we're back to where we were 15 years ago. Additional bullets here. All principals are required to submit a master schedule checklist that has certain criteria to ensure they're paying attention to specific components, such as does a teacher, make sure all your teachers have their unencumbered lunch period, ensure that there's balance in terms of teacher responsibility in the amount of classes they have. One teacher's not teaching six while another's teaching three. They look at, you know, are they putting their best teachers with the students in most in need? And we make sure that they walk through that document K through 12 as just kind of a checklist. They're very skilled at this, but it helps us centrally to ensure those things are going on. They are actively recruiting retirees. We encourage them to do that. Many of our principals have great relationships with their retirees and quite often that's the first person they call in a vacancy. On the secondary level, we've seen that happen is in a world language class, for example. Kempsville High School had a French opening called "The Principal." They only needed a part-time teacher, reached out to one of their retired teachers who said, "Yes, I'd be glad to teach that course on a part-time basis." I know there's more incentives now for retirees to teach. I believe they almost can get their retirement pay and then engage in receiving the, the full pay as well. So there's some things that are enhancements there. On the secondary level only, we, I talked about this a little bit yesterday, additional class allowances to include middle school to high school teachers and high school to middle school. What we mean by that is, as you know, or may, may not know, but as you know, middle school starts typically around 9:15. That's after first period for high school. The opportunity exists in some cases for a middle school teacher to say, "I'd be glad to teach Spanish at the high school level for first block with the additional allowance pay." In some of those instances, we would probably leverage what you saw yesterday, the distance learning technology, so that they're not having to travel between two schools. On the high school end, we would also say that at the end of the day, there's time for an end-of-the-day block where a high school teacher could pick up a middle school course if needed. We understand that may not be appealing to a lot of folks. You know, if I've been teaching all day from 7:10 to 2 o'clock on the high school level, picking up an additional one is not there, not necessarily appealing to all. But we certainly feel like we'd be able to find some individuals who'd be willing to do that and, and receive compensation for that. Middle school students taking courses at a high school stu, at high schools, we've done that already quite often. A great neck middle school student goes over to Cox High School to take a foreign language, world language class, and then returns back to great, great neck for the remainder of the day. Those are not unique. Salem Middle School used to do it to Salem High School all the time. It was an easy way to, one, maximize your classes and provide opportunities for middle school students that could not take that advanced level course, maybe at the middle school level, or it opened up another area of their schedule that they could take. The distance learning, remote hybrid VBDC options with DTAL, that's the component that we talked about yesterday, but I think we'll get a little more in detail for things. I shared more about world language yesterday than I did about core content. Ms. Ry, I know you would ask those questions about math. So the example I will give you is last week, we met with DOSL, myself and others, met with DTAL, met with the coordinators for math, coordinators for world language, and talked about what would be our best place to go distance learning in math on the secondary level. And this is where we came with the upper level math classes. Working with both of those coordinators is to identify teachers that would be best served in that environment, recognizing it's not for everyone. So where can we identify teachers that could handle the distance learning model that Mr. Din and Dr. Schubridge shared yesterday? And then really working with our schools to say, where are the gaps that we need to fill and what time of day would that look like to where we need to make those decisions? So I share all of that, that there's comprehensive conversations going on around our staffing shortages and the needs that are there. And obviously, it's different between elementary, middle, and high school. There's a lot more flexibility on the secondary level than there is on the elementary school level. I believe somebody posed the question yesterday if elementary was looking at this distance learning model and the answer is we have not primarily done that. I think it speaks a lot to some of the other conversations that we've had today. The next component on here, when we look at school-based staffing solutions, I want to be very clear here as people listen to this, we're providing these solutions, fully recognizing these are not ideal. We're providing these solutions, fully recognizing these are not ideal. It provides us a lot of heartburn to think we may have to go in this direction in some cases. So I want to make sure, as you look at these, that we are looking at components saying, this is things we have to address. It's the reality in front of us. But we're not doing it in a manner that's flippant, as if we're just going to make this decision, and here, here's where we go, because we are paying attention to the other things we heard today. Utilizing site-assigned substitutes, long-term substitutes, and teacher assistants for roll-up pay to sub. The teacher assistants get the roll-up pay. This is not ideal. This is short-term. Looking at a scenario of saying, in the short term, we've got to put a site-assigned sub or a perm substitute teacher in there while we are working out other details in that, quite often which becomes the distance learning component. Can we identify that need? We can't wait long to allow that perm sub to stay in that classroom. Can we look at another component? It's also where we come back to what we shared, what I shared earlier about the need to shift allocations if necessary. We may look at a school and say, we've got to move this elementary school teacher from here to here because the need is there. Much of that is data-driven. It's around our SOQs, and it's also around where we are with test scores and other data points where we recognize that support is needed. We also recognize at times we may need to utilize school-based specialists and sometimes central support specialists. You know, these individuals are highly-trained math coaches and reading coaches. They do unbelievable support for teachers. Frankly, I don't believe we'd be 100% accredited as a school division without the work of these folks. They do amazing work, especially on the elementary school level. They run their collaborative sessions, the planning sessions with teachers. So to move them out of that has some long-term implications, but we recognize that may be a need in some cases to move folks into those roles. We talked about this last spring, probably, I think we started the discussion in January and February, March. I'm losing track of time a little bit, but we said we would come back and revisit the middle school schedule. I know at the moment, when we brought it forward last year, it was very much, have we gotten the stakeholder input that we did with the high school flexible scheduling? And at that time, we didn't feel comfortable, I believe the board didn't feel comfortable that we had. But it's something we have to look at because we have several teachers who could teach fifth grade to teach middle school, or can move up to high school as needed to teach some of those courses. So we will continue to work on that. Dr. Smith will continue to work on revisiting the middle school schedule. And we monitor course offerings on the secondary level. There's two kind of components around that monitoring. If you look at some of the electives that we provide in middle school, for example, we do have what we call exploratory electives. Sixth graders take nine weeks of exploratory Spanish, exploratory French, so forth and so on. Well, that occupies a teacher that could possibly teach an accredited course, a credit-bearing world language course at a different time of the day at either the high school or middle school level. So we have to look and kind of balance that component. And the other thing that we always do with monitoring course offerings is there's times when we look at student enrollment or staffing that we just have to cancel the course for that year. That's not unheard of. Only seven kids are enrolled in that class. Therefore, the class is not going to make, and we have to shift those students into another, into another class. So that's just kind of a look at where we are right now with building principles around the staffing of this year. I think as you heard Ann's presentation, you see the long-term challenges that occur when you look at, those are nothing new to you. We've heard it over the last several years, but I think we're willing to answer any questions at this time.
Well, maybe I'll start. I'm sure my colleagues will, within moments, come up with plenty of their own. So I don't remember the exact setting, but we were all together, and it was sometime just in the last few weeks or month, part-time employment, that it was acknowledged that we could perhaps do a better job communicating that option. I know we would prefer to take somebody full-time, but particularly, and it doesn't have to be just new moms, for example, or new dads, right? But that, to me, is one, so is there a plan on how to, how to market that option?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, we have, in our HR department, an individual who focuses just on marketing. So we do a variety of radio ads. It could be a large push through social media. When we're just communicating to future employees, we push out to anyone who is, currently has an application on file, whether they work with us or not. We really work closely with Dossel, Department of School Leadership, because their principals are able to reach out to individuals who may have expressed interest in just part-time work. And so we view that as an individual who is less than a full-time employee, 1.0 allocation. And so with each area, there comes benefits, and so we work with that individual and what works best. It is easier, I would say, to have part-time employees in certain positions than it is in some others. You will find at the secondary levels, for instance, middle school, high school, school-based employees, who, when you're on a four-by-four-type schedule, who love part-time work, because it allows them to work every other day, or maybe just in the morning and/or the afternoon. So what we do is we encourage it.
Secondary lends itself more than elementary, absolutely.
Exactly.
I remember after, I mean, I had a 10-year corporate career with Prudential, and I got a phone call after my child was born from the director, you know, offering me a part-time return, and that, you know, just I had a personal example of that.
And you're correct, and that's exactly what we have partnered with, with the Department of School Leadership. I would love to tell you that I could personally call everyone. Cannot, but our principals are doing that. Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I pointed out it was.
Exactly.
It was my director at the time who called me.
Exactly. Someone who you know, who you have a relationship with, and a very positive working experience, that'll make you at least contemplate the thought of returning. And so we see that quite often, and we're seeing good benefits from our part-time employees. Yes, ma'am.
So my colleagues have not let me down. We have Ms. Owens to begin.
Two quick ones. The slide that had the school-based staffing solutions, one was revisiting the middle school schedule. Could you explain that to me? Again, I think I missed part of it.
Sure. If you look at a typical middle school schedule, right now, teachers teach four classes, three to four classes. Whereas you look at a high school level, they're teaching five to six. Because of the way the schedule is formatted, when you look at the, what they call their, I'll use Princeton Middle as an example, Panther time and remediation time for students takes away some of those opportunities for teachers to teach more classes. Now, we share that, saying that's extremely valuable time. I certainly don't want to give the impression that middle school teachers are not putting in the effort as a former middle school principal. I certainly saw it. But I think when you look at, how are we getting them to maximize more opportunities to teach classes? That's the piece we have to look at and the heartburn that kind of comes with some decisions around staffing.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I guess my other question slash comment is, when we're getting to the point where we are looking at having long-term subs or teacher assistants subbing in certain classrooms who don't have credentials in that subject area versus having staff members who have credentials but need, are only willing to work virtually, does there become a point in time where we start looking at having a number of positions that we are willing to hire part-time as virtual? People who have left our system and are not willing to come back inside the classroom quite yet to utilize some of those, for some of the classes, obviously not full-time and not necessarily going and recruiting for a virtual wing, but those people exist and they were specific about why they were leaving. Is there a way to utilize that?
And I'll be happy to touch upon that. If you notice in Ann's presentation, one of the solutions that she recommended was remote work. And we've had this conversation at the senior staff level in terms of, what does that look like for the division? And is it a benefit to the division when that opportunity is offered? The one thing we recognized and we saw through COVID, although it was a stressful situation to just, you know, close doors basically within a 24-hour time period, our teachers are very well-trained and versed to be able to teach in a remote and/or hybrid format. And for some situations, as we did actually this year, when we did an all-call, you know, through the news stations, that we were looking for teachers, retirees, who were willing to pick up a class or two, and that remote work was an option. And so we continue to leave that on the table. I believe that's going to become a bigger and broader conversation for all school boards. Because, you know, once upon a time, when you really think about it, a family doesn't want to pick up and relocate necessarily on a permanent basis, but they're very willing to teach in a remote situation. And so we started offering a little bit of that last year, but I do believe that is something as a, as a board and as a division will really need to explore further, because it just, it doesn't just impact our classrooms. It impacts other critical positions that we have in this division. And we're seeing it more and more in the tech field, the marketing field. You heard Dr. Paula Singer said, we're the only group that she's actually traveled for. Since COVID, she's doing everything remotely, which we're honored, and we thank her for that. But the remote opportunity definitely is there. It's just a matter of the comfort level of the board as we continue to have this conversation.
So on school-based staffing solutions, I know that desperate times call for desperate measures. But as we bring up yet again, the middle school schedule revisit, I just want to highlight that I think we're getting the, getting it right at the middle school level regarding the workload. From what I remember in previous presentations, we have a much higher retention of teachers at the middle school level than anywhere else. And my big concern is if we do this, that we will lose teachers. So we'll be shooting ourselves in the foot. So I think that that should be a matter of absolute last resort.
Yeah, I think, that's why I said we have heartburn. Any of these solutions, we run the risk of losing teachers. And we're cognizant of that. There's no solution that we're looking at and saying, we're going to get a parade from teachers going, that was an outstanding solution to a staffing shortage. Because the solution in many cases, as Dr. Spence shared, are you giving me more time? And do we have enough staff to support? And in these solutions, most often the answer to both of those questions is probably not. And so in all of those, we recognize that it's, they're challenging decisions to make because we could lose staff as a result of that decision. You know, saying we're going to shift an allocation from one school to another is not one that all teachers will embrace. You know, they picked a school that hired them, and that was the school they wanted to go to. They don't always see themselves as a VBCPS employee. So all of these decisions, we recognize, may come back later and say, well, we lost staff. We lost a teacher as a result of that decision, and that's, that's what's keeping us up at night, quite frankly, Ms. Manning.
And if I could add, Mr. Delaney, because obviously being in human resources, I get those wonderful emails. And listen, I totally understand. I say to employees when I speak to them on the phone, I do understand. You want to have control of where it is that you work and where you support. And because we are a large homegrown community, many of our students come back to teach in the beach where they graduated from. But we are embracing that time of year where we work very closely with multiple departments in terms of ensuring that our schools are fully staffed to the best of our ability. And you get, I know you, as board members, receive those emails. I actually got two while sitting here today. Because sometimes you have to have that delicate conversation in getting them to understand that you're needed in another location. And what we do try to do for the following years to return them back to the school in which they originally were. But that's one of those areas where your support is greatly appreciated. Because, believe me, we would not pick up the phone and have that conversation with the individual or have a principal have that face-to-face conversation with the individual if we didn't get to the point where that was literally our last resort. But we're approaching that timeframe, so I just let you know. You're getting them, and please forward them to me. I'll be happy to address them along with the fine staff that I work with.
Mrs. Franklin?
Thank you. And I want to thank all of you for all the hard work you're doing. I think that in order for us to stay ahead of the curve, we are definitely going to have to be innovative and creative to do that. And I know that this was a lot of good work that went into this. I also want to kind of just concur, though, because we did get a lot of feedback when the hybrid scheduling came from the middle school teachers. And so I just want us to be cautious about that as well. I think that, you know, is, if it comes to last resort, well, you know, it's definitely worthy of a discussion, but let's just be cautious. So a couple of things that I just wanted to address is, I love the idea of the additional class allowances to include middle school, or is that where you give the opportunity to have teachers that are in middle school, maybe teach in high school and that sort of thing? I think that is great. I, you know, I have always worked two jobs, and I know that there are a lot of people out there that probably love to improve their budget every month and look for opportunities. We have teachers that leave and then they go do other things, waitress, or, you know, work at the gym, or whatever the case may be. So I definitely love the opportunity that they can stay at school and still, you know, help the division with providing another class instruction or come early or something like that. I think that is brilliant in looking at that opportunity, not only to help the students in our division, but also to help them as well, so that they can just stay in one place and not have to look for outside opportunities. And the other thing that I wanted to just highlight that you guys put on your, your list here is something I think is really, really great. If we, any of the board members know those, especially, I know Sharon speaks to a lot of legislators, but, you know, that we could speak to about this. I love the idea of the reciprocity. I think that would be so helpful. And I'm surprised that only eight states provide that. I, that's kind of shocking to me. And I would love to be ahead of the curve as a state, to be one of those states. And I have to assume that we're not currently. Is that right?
No, we are not.
Okay. And then expanding the teacher loan forgiveness, you know, in federal grants, a lot, a lot, let me just emphasize this, a lot of occupations that are hard to staff with, provide opportunities for their federal student loans. If they're in a nonprofit, and they work there for 10 years, and of course, they have to apply, and then, once they apply, that's when the 10-year clock starts. But once they apply for that, if they're in a nonprofit work for 10 years, because we all know that that is also very hard to staff, because they don't get paid a lot to do that. But if they're in nonprofit work for 10 years, they do get their student loans forgiven, and that's why a lot of people go into that field. So I definitely think if we, any of us know those legislators that could help make decisions on this, these are four very important things that, that we should bring forth and make sure that our voices are heard in the division. So, so thank you for bringing those. I think those are very good points.
And I just want to piggyback on the one piece. We talked briefly about the critical shortage teacher, critical shortage areas. So those retirees, they have to be, have no VRS affiliation for one whole year. One whole year. And then they can come back, and they still are able to maintain their retirement plus a full salary based on their years of experience. So they don't go back to zero years.
Or a part-time salary.
Or a part-time salary. And that's what you heard, was actually, it's a French teacher. And he's been doing that, I think he's been in that position for about four or five years. And he works with another teacher who teaches German. They kind of go teach. So when one of them is actually out, they will sub for the other person. So it's been a win-win situation, not only us and the students, but for them as well. Yes, they have.
That's what we've been discussing lately.
Right. Exactly. No, no, and you're correct. So that's another piece. Again, it's an impediment. So here we have a ready force, and we, you know, honestly, we should be honest with them and tell them that information. We shouldn't hide that. And so they go, oh. But maybe another opportunity will come along the way that will sweep them away. So again, when they have a ready-made force, I think it's a good deal.
Thank you. Hello? Am I there?
Yes.
I'm going to take a stab at this. Ms. Zil, Zilneck, did I do okay?
Zil's fine.
I'm still working on it, Ms. Ann. I'd just like to say thank you for all that you've done, and it's really great. And I am home then, as Ms. Franklin has said, about the licensure. And just to refresh my memory, was it one time that the governor did do a, a allowance that military spouses that were coming in with teacher licenses, they were able to teach without going through the whole process again? Was there ever something that we did here in this?
It was really about, I can't recall because it's been a little bit. But there was some, some information about the military requirements, some years of experience. I'd have to go back and look at the details. The primary thing with a licensure for those outside of the eight states is that you sometimes have to come back in. You have to take additional assessments. Sometimes the Praxis scores are different. That's typically the number-one thing. One of the number-one things, our scores are a bit higher. I did kind of do some research. They're kind of leveling out across the states around us. I checked Maryland and other places. But if you have to take those assessments all over again, or come in provisionally and then provide additional documentation for a class, for a licensure that, I can tell you, one particular special teacher, she was in Texas, she taught special education for six or seven years. VDOE kicked it back to us and she had to provide a whole bunch of additional documentation as to how she obtained the special education licensure. So, but she'd been teaching there for seven years.
So that's where I'm going. When I was at ODU, and I bring this all the time, when I was at ODU, 2008, we had a mass exodus of student teachers going to North Carolina because they had to take the Praxis 1, Praxis 2, and Virginia State license. Am I not that true?
They take, pretty much everybody's taking them, that's for the part.
Pretty much everyone is taking them, but they do have a few fewer assessments. But all the pieces are this, they are on a sort of a provisional license for three, four years. So they can't leave North Carolina to come here.
Exactly. And that's where I'm going. They cannot come from North Carolina anywhere else. They have to come back in, get a reassessment. So where I'm going is, but they do allow some of the ones that have student loans, if they teach at a certain school.
Title I.
Title I, that they do release a loan in five years.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So that's what a lot of them do as well. So.
Title I and high needs.
So I got two more questions. So what are we doing as a division to sort of kind of compensate that, to get them in, especially if they have their provisional license and allowance? Are we helping them to go the next step? And how are we doing that?
So the very first thing we mentioned also with professional growth and innovation is providing that support if there are assessments that need to be taken. The licensure office sends correspondence to anyone on a provisional license. I mean, they start in June for the next year. These are the things that you need to do. You can call the licensure office. Anybody, any teacher can. I've done it. I send people their way all the time. So those pieces are there in terms of going towards. And that's some monitoring. So part of it too is continuing, you know, having staff to remind them, "Look, go ahead and start completing what is required." Because the three years will go very fast, as you know. And if you have college courses to take on top of working a full-time job, and as we know, a full-time job overloaded, now you're taking a graduate level depending on where you are, it can get a little tough. So we also have the Teacher in Residence Program that we're involved with at ODU. So those teacher assistants who are in that position are able to work alongside a teacher, special education staff person, and they get that full year experience while they're getting paid. So there are some of those pieces that are helping to boost staff's ability to receive a renewable license. And then, of course, the state is providing those extensions, but it's a year-by-year decision. And it happens, what, in May?
Too late.
Too late. And so then they decide. So we're thankful for that because it is allowing those teachers that are getting right to the close end, they can have a little bit of a reprieve, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen every year.
Absolutely. And I just wanted you to go through that because taking those tests is very comprehensive. It's detailed and it takes a minute. And this is one of their discourages. It's a strong point why they don't come into the profession because of all the testing that they have to take and all the professional development after they take the test. So I'm in agreement. I'm willing to speak with the legislators on that, especially about the licensures and being able to bring them in and how we can sort of minimize some of that as well. That's why it's so important that the community, the public, know that coming into this profession is not just a flippant thing, you're testing.
It's not for the weak.
Right. Exactly. And I speak to that very passionately because I was on that path, being a teacher and taking, and I took the Praxis. It was mind-blowing. And when you sit there taking the math and the English and all those components, it is, it's mind-blowing. So I just want the public to know how extensive it is and how detailed it is just to take those three tests to get into teaching and being able to stay there. So I am looking forward to speaking with you more because I would like to bring this up with Congressman Bobby Scott and let him know where we are on this and speak on that. Thank you.
So a time check. We have Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Weems who will wrap us up with this and then we'll get into our scratch cooking. So Mrs. Anderson?
So one of the things that I brought forward, actually, it was last year, last fall, after I attended the VSBA conference in November. And I talked with Dr. Robertson about what is being done, I can't remember the county, but it's the county where Virginia Tech is located. I don't remember the name of that county. But what they were doing there to help their teachers, they have a whole huge program there to help their teachers who have a provisional license. And so I explained to him, you know, what they were doing. And they've had much success with really providing a lot of extra help to their teachers who have provisional licenses. And they actually did an advertising campaign to the community, letting people know that if you, you know, maybe you're a teacher who has a college degree, but you're not licensed in Virginia. And we have a lot of people, a lot of military who come to our area who would be great teachers. And if they knew that we were going to be helping them and paying them as long as giving them a job on a provisional license and also helping them. What they were doing to help their teachers was just phenomenal. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, what we expect of our teachers. We need to give a lot of help to those beginning teachers and those people who are with a provisional license. The other thing is, so I'm hearing that we really need to work on legislation for the legislative committee, and not just them, but anybody who speaks to legislators, on the reciprocity. Now, when I first came to Virginia, I had a license in West Virginia and we did have a reciprocity with West Virginia at the time. I don't know if that's half the case, but that needs to be all up and down these because we have so many military coming here. We need to have that really on a federal level. There needs to be more reciprocity so that people who, especially in this area, we have so many military coming in. We need to have that reciprocity available. And then legislatively, we also need help with this one year for retirement that they have to wait out a year. We need that either cut short or eliminated for a while because we're in a crisis right now with finding teachers. So we really need our legislators to be aware of that. And so anybody that's hearing this, even our parents or our community who might be hearing this, please let your legislators know that this could be something that could be very helpful for us in hiring teachers.
And we do have reciprocity in many states. I want to make sure I clarify that. It's the steps that you have to take to obtain a full Virginia license. So many will be able to get a provisional license and then the state sends them a little checklist of things that they do. That might be the Praxis, it might be an extra course. There are states that provide different options for provisional license while you're obtaining it. I know that the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children has the Try It program. So we have quite a few things to help support people. I just think it's the working full-time, pulling away. If you have to student teach, then you cannot work. You cannot be paid if you're a student. So there's those little pickup things, but you need the student teaching. It's sort of a catch-22.
Right. So, but like I said, helping those people who possibly could earn a license, we need to pay more attention to that. And I think Dr. Robertson, I believe you said you were going to check into that with me?
So we're going to wrap up with Mrs. Riggs. You're going to wrap us up.
I just told Sharon, I asked them to lower the air conditioning because I was always overlooked to speak. So I like it to stay cold so everybody else can be cold. Anyway, Dr. Spence told me to throw something, so I'm throwing a fit. Okay, anyway. What I have to say is really not that important, but I do want to say I am all-in for the virtual and looking at doing that, not only, you know, for teacher positions, but also for the office positions and administrative offices. I've heard so many people leave because of it. They're going because they're getting more pay, because it works better for their family to be able to work virtually. I've heard so many teachers say, "I just left teaching. I'm going to do the virtual." And so I am totally, when you said to us a couple of months, a month or so ago, "We really needed to get serious about it," I totally agree. It's become the thing. Obviously, not for elementary, but there's too many people out there that that's what they're looking for, to stay in time. And I will ditto what Mrs. Manning said about the middle school. Do not. I'm going to have the heartburn and I'm not going to let go on that one. So I know you've got to do a lot of things, but that one, she's right. We're going to be stepping, we're going to lose so many more. I mean, you know I know that and y'all know it too. So I'm totally against that. But anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you. And Ms. Rye, if I could say real quick, just so everyone is aware, Ann is our actual full-time coordinator for recruitment and retention. And her work with the local universities, various businesses, I know she was just on the phone with Lynn Haven Mall about some type advertisement. She really gets out, has conversations individually, and really looks to promote Virginia Beach in the best positive light as possible. And I just wanted to share with you that we know and recognize she does an awesome job, but wanted you to also be aware that she just does a phenomenal job.
So, Ms. Hart?
Yes, I need staff. You go ahead, sir.
Just super fast, I appreciate Ms. Woodhouse doing that, but I think we would be remiss in our conversation on staffing if we didn't take a second just to acknowledge the entire Human Resources team. They are working 24 hours, seven days a week to address some of these staffing challenges. And I think the one key takeaway that I hope the board will walk away with, there's a lot of things we can talk about, is that we are facing real and significant staffing challenges. And that these are not short-term issues, these are long-term issues, and they're going to require some creative solutions. And I hear you loud and clear, we don't want to mess with the middle school schedule. And, you know, Mrs. Manning, you said something I think is dead-on, which is, "That's a schedule that works. That's a schedule that gives middle school teachers time they need to do their job." And so I think there are a lot of things that we have to look at. It's a holistic picture, not any single thing is going to solve it picture. But, you know, we all need to recognize, and it's not a Virginia Beach issue. This is a serious and a significant and a long-term problem for public education. And if we can't get this right, our solutions windows narrow rapidly. I mean, if you're starting every school year minus 100, minus 200 teachers, you run out of options quickly in terms of what you can do to provide education for children. And so we may be looking at radical adjustments to our work, including class size adjustments and other things that nobody really wants to be thinking about. So that's why I said earlier, things like, you know, if we want to talk about workload issues and those kinds of things, we may have to really step out and take some bolder steps that are not comfortable when you talk about how we've traditionally done schooling. So just kind of leaving you with that thought. And with that, we're going to turn it over. I think it's scratch cooking time, correct?
So if you could clarify, yes, how this next session works? Because I see there's a handout. So are we starting here or moving elsewhere with our?
I believe we're going to go next door.
So I'm letting my colleagues know there is a handout to take with you. Otherwise, it's just going to sit here.
Yeah, and I think they'll go over that as well in there.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Spence, if I may, so yes, there is a handout because there is a presentation. You can bring the handout if you like. I'm imagining you're going to want to pick a break.
We're down for now to do this. Oh, okay.
If you want no break, we're ready to take this.
Well, because we're going to have lunch as our break, right? Okay, okay. So, and will we convene back here at 1:30 for the benefit of the public? Carolyn Rye, and again, on behalf of my colleagues, we thank those in person with us today and the viewing and listening public. And we are on day two of our retreat and we are beginning our afternoon session again with Ms. Woodhouse starting us off to discuss employee input process.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm happy to spend additional time with you this afternoon. Actually, I'm enjoying these presentations around the Enhanced Employee Input Process. Okay. I know. Or I'll start coughing. That's even worse. So the agenda for the presentation, during this presentation, I will cover for you the following information. The Enhanced Employee Input Process current. Discuss a little bit about the Employee and Process Enhanced Work Group Discussion, and then where we left off in terms of our next steps. For the viewing public, I would like to share just a little bit of the previous presentation that was shared. And that is regarding the policies that cover our employee input process. Currently, as a division, we have two policies which focus on the employee input process. And those are Policies 2-15 on Communication with Staff, as well as Policy 4-8, which requires implementation of the employee input process. Although both outline the need for the division to have an opportunity for employees to voice and share their concerns, they do not necessarily go in-depth around what that process would actually look like. The work group that met looked at the possibilities of whether or not these policies will have to be revised, to update and updated to meet whatever the final decisions and outcomes may be. So today, the Current Employee Input Process is an anonymous web-based survey that employees can complete once every other year. The purpose of the survey is to seek input from employees and allow staff an opportunity to review the feedback and implement changes where possible. This process also provides the administration with the ability to organize the information collected and sorted by employee groups, years of service, gender, race, et cetera, and follow up where necessary. The current web-based survey captures feedback from approximately 48 to 51% of employees. And you heard Lisa Baniki at the most recent update indicate that we saw an additional 2% growth, about 53% of our employees who participated in that process. The goal of the enhanced process is to increase the percentage of employees we're receiving feedback from and provide a variety of ways employees can share their ideas. We also want to ensure identified employee groups such as food services, our custodial staff, bus drivers, and facility staff who do not work behind a computer daily are also given the opportunities to participate during their workday. So in essence, it's important for us, for our employees, to continue to be seen, heard, and feel valued. So in terms of our work group membership, on June 10th, the work group members included school board members, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Franklin, Ms. Lanetti, legal representation, legal counsel, myself, and members of the Human Resources Department team, to include Stephanie Ensman and Judith Wood. During the work group meeting that took place again on June 10th, several topics was discussed. Some of the topics including the possibilities of providing incentives to employees for responding to the online survey. That conversation took place again around the fact that we had between 48 to 50% of our employees responding to the survey and what other incentives, if necessary. our employees responding to the survey, and what other incentives, if necessary, or we found necessary, to encourage a higher percent of participation. That's what's nice to see when you listen to Dr. Singer this morning, say that we had 68% of our employees respond to the survey. And so, that brings into question another conversation around whether or not maybe we need to look at having an outside entity do our surveys versus having our surveys done in-house. And so, that was part of the conversation of the work group. We also talked about separating the current web-based survey into pre-identified areas. Some of the feedback that we heard from staff was that they felt the survey was long. You know, most are accustomed now to when they complete a survey, they want a few questions, an opportunity to leave a thought, and sometimes just saying five to 10 minutes is a long time, and it deters individuals from wanting to complete the survey. In breaking that up, they also talked about maybe the survey, to survey each area at various times throughout the year. Maybe as you're getting closer and entering into the budget process, maybe the questions around compensation, finances, benefits could be included, and maybe during other times of the year, the survey could focus on maybe work environment, professional development, or the like. How to continue to ensure anonymity and anonymity, and that's, again, we, even though we share quite often with our employees that these surveys are fully anonymous, we have never tried to connect an individual with it, there's still a sense of feeling from some of our employees that they cannot freely speak on these surveys because it is issued by the division. And then providing frequent communication regarding upcoming opportunities to participate in the surveys, but as well as a solid communication plan in regards to the outcomes of the survey and the next steps. And so, I thought that was a very interesting conversation this morning, when Dr. Singer indicated, so what are the next steps? How will you get the results of the survey out to all of your stakeholders? And so, we have definitely been having some conversation around that particular topic, and in working with media and senior leadership, will definitely ensure that our employees are aware of the outcome of that survey. So, work group consensus items, and we had consensus on multiple areas. First, the work group agreed to keep the current online survey that is issued once every two years, but again, having the discussion around whether or not it's one that we issue or not. But we felt the frequency of every other year allowed for the staff time to put together work groups to actually address any concerns that were brought about in the survey. The next priority was to ensure there was sessions solely for classified employees, and the work group agreed supervisors of classified employees from the various offices and departments would not be eligible to participate in these sessions. What we had heard a little, and we do hear this sometimes for our employee groups, is that we recognize that our division encompasses a little over 10,000 full-time employees with half, 50, approximately 50% being teachers. But in HR, we do often hear from some of our other employee groups who feel sometimes that the focus is primarily on teachers, and they sometimes feel left out. So, we thought this would be a great opportunity during the employee input process, that as we're having these meetings, that we have collaborative meetings that are open to everyone, but also gear some of those meetings towards other work groups that may not be as large in numbers or smally representative. The work group also agreed that meetings would be held virtually and face-to-face, but they would not be recorded by the division. And again, to ensure that people have our full confidence, they would know that, that their name and their face would not be recorded with their comments. But with the opportunity to have virtual meetings, we found those had become very popular with our community as well as with our workforce. And then, that also allows us to, the opportunity to offer day and evening meetings. There was discussion on the frequency of the meetings, and the consensus was to hold them no less than three times per year, but they could vary in format. And then additionally, it was agreed to hold virtual and face-to-face meetings for all employee groups, and they would be held both during the workday and work evening. The last discussion point that the work group discussed was a name more fitting to the process. So, right now, we, we're kind of referencing the employee input process enhanced, because we already had the employee input process, but if there was a name that could better capture the fact that this would be a more collaborative in nature process and bringing multiple people to the table. As we concluded our first meeting, we agreed to come back to the table and generate some ideas around a potential name. So, for work group next steps, as you can see, the work group has made progress in the enhanced employee input process. Our next steps will include scheduling of another meeting to identify the structures for the program, establish a timeline for the meetings, consider a name that represents the voice of the employees, and to collaborate with the Department of Technology in terms of ideas around virtual meetings and formats that will, again, allow for people to feel secure in the process and determine if there are any policy updates are necessary. And as a work group, of course, we remain committed to seeking out the employee's voice in this entire process. As I conclude the presentation, I will say again, yesterday, when Ms. Pate presented the timeline for the budget process, that that was very fitting, especially for us as a work group, as we take a look at where to best place the meetings, the timeline, to ensure that the board has the information that they need to make as informed decisions as possible as we enter into the budget season. And so, with that, that is concludes the presentation, and if you have any questions, I am happy to address any questions you may have.
So, to, to be consistent with yesterday, I would first like to offer the opportunity to Ms. Anderson and Mrs. Franklin to perhaps offer some commentary. Either of you wanna start, or?
So, I will, I'll start. One of the things that we might, that we did discuss, we talked about having, you know, meetings throughout the year, but from my experience, and one of the reasons why we do talk about budget priorities at this time of year, is because we need to get those priorities straight. So, the sooner we start having these meetings with our employees, the better, because if they have compensation issues, we need to hear about that long before December. So, we, we need to have those as soon as possible. I don't know if we can get it together enough to have something in August or September, but I think the opportunity needs to be presented so that people can be thinking about. And we, we did talk about, I can't remember, I think we talked about putting the word out that we want people, people to be thinking about issues that they'd like to be bringing forward. We wanted to advertise that and get people to bring those, be thinking about that so that it's all of a sudden, oh, the meeting's next week, have you thought of anything? We want them to be thinking about that now, so that when September comes around, I know September's a busy month, but it, it could present an opportunity for us to have some, at least in a virtual sense.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like we could get a lot of participation if we do this virtually, as well as have the opportunity to do it face-to-face, so. That was my input.
Mrs. Franklin?
Agree, just so piggybacking off of Ms. Anderson, you know, just making sure that we do send reminders to, that we are having these different topics throughout the year, so that they can really bring their thoughts together before we have the meetings, and again, like she said, not just telling them, oh, by the way, next week we're having a meeting, or tomorrow we're having a meeting, or today we're having a meeting. And just so that they have some time to really put their thoughts together and, and provide some valuable input. And then, just again, making sure that because of the concern for anonymity, you know, I really do want to emphasize the fact that we have to find ways, just like, you know, how the feedback was greater having a third party that was able to do the survey, you know, for their, their happiness or their thoughts about the division. I, I really feel like we also need to strengthen that piece here within the division and make sure that they feel comfortable to give us clarity and honest feedback without any concern of repercussions. We hear that a lot in a lot of the, the conversations that we have when we speak to these different groups, that they're concerned about some of the feedback they provide, so I cannot stress enough how important that piece is. So, I think that those were two of the biggest things that I, I feel like really came out of this workshop, and understanding how, you know, we want to absolutely let employees know how valuable their input is, and that we are here for them, and that we truly value their feedback.
Yes, ma'am.
So, is one of the things you're looking for today, maybe just colleagues, input from colleagues for your next work group meeting, or just whether they have questions, comments, all the above?
Exactly, both comments-
Feedback.
Feedback around what the first work group meeting established, around the processes, and the likes.
I'm not hearing anything further, but, but hold on.
Oh.
Where, so, so maybe you, when you talk about identify structures, let me start with a question under the work group, you're talking about like, I think you alluded to it, sometimes it might be open to everybody, and other times it would be, well, well, this round might be just the classified or just the bus drivers as an example, or?
So, for example, when we discussed a minimum of three meetings, the idea was those three meetings would be open to anyone and everyone in the division. Any employee could attend, whether it be virtual or face-to-face. But also, in conjunction with those three meetings, ensuring that we also have some meetings to meet the needs of, say, our bus drivers or our food services personnel, and some of the groups who have expressed, whether it be through comments, through feedback from us, just knowing that we were starting this process, that they would like to have opportunities to discuss their needs in greater depth, because their needs do not mirror other groups that we tend to talk about more or focus a little bit more on, or at least that was their perception, and that was the classroom teachers.
So, obviously, with face-to-face meetings, you, you don't have anonymity, but are you envisioning it just being HR staff versus, you know, docile staff and others? Like, is this something HR is going to own?
It will be something that we own in HR in collaboration and support of other departments. And I say that loosely because some departments indicated that they would not want to be in a meeting with their supervisors, and felt more comfortable speaking with HR staff. So, our goal would be primarily with HR staff. What we envisioned when we started this conversation, and we will finalize through the work group, and then obviously bring a recommendation back for senior staff to discuss and bring back to the table for the school board, was even in a whole group setting, the meetings may begin in a whole group setting, but then break out into smaller groups also. So, as a full group, you can hear what other concerns individuals may have, they may mirror the same concerns, and then break out into smaller groups that will still allow you to focus on where exactly it is that you work and the needs of your department. And so, that's what we typically envision. We also talked about, I'm not for sure if you remember, when we were looking at and having conversations around grading practices and, and changes in our grading practices. We had feedback cards where even if you were an individual who attended the meeting, but you did not want to speak, you could leave your questions or your comments on a card, and it was collected by staff and analyzed. All of that information from any of the meetings we have face-to-face or virtual would be compiled together and go along with the web-based survey. So, really, you have two opportunities to make sure your voice is heard.
Yep. And I'm not sure if you guys have already discussed, this is a, maybe a finer detail yet, these meetings, when they occur, will they happen during paid school hours for participation, or is this an expectation that staff is gonna be after hours to participate? And is there a way that these can be incorporated, availability during a staff day? And there's a lot that fits into a staff day already, half-day, some kind of way where staff members can participate without having to get more unpaid time?
Right, right. And, and there lies part of the challenge that we have, because we did discuss in terms of where, location, in terms of central, using a school. If you have it at a school, only a part of the staff is available because of planning.
Right.
And so, what we really talked about was the, having it immediately, like after school. So, for instance, if we're using a high school site, and we're focusing primarily on high school folks, maybe we'd be set up at 2:00, the meeting started immediately, you know, 2:15 and in. At least then, individuals wouldn't have to go home and come back. But then also having that virtual opportunity later, say at 5:00 or 6:00 PM, where, so maybe I need to get home, I need to get my children settled, but then I can jump back online and participate. So, I think in the beginning, we'll flush out some different opportunities, and then also gather feedback from our stakeholders in, in terms of better times. Probably the only way that we could make it as conducive is, you're talking probably 86 meetings around the division, it'd take us probably a couple of years to have that completed, so. But we wanna definitely encourage attendance, so we will make it as conducive as we can for our employees.
And just throwing an idea of being out of the box, and hopefully you guys will continue to brainstorm out-of-the-box ways to encourage participation, but perhaps paying our employees for their time. So, if they, if we're doing this after hours, employees who show up and participate can be either monetary compensation or some comp time somewhere. I don't know any other profession, or I haven't worked in another profession, where the staff meetings to improve our processes happen outside of paid work, and education is unique that way. And so, if we say we value their input, showing ways that we, we actually value it monetarily or with their time, so.
Exactly. And you make a valid point, because we hear that quite often from our night staff, our evening staff, who will often say to us, you know, everything that happens is 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock, and, you know, we're working, and so that's why we wanna make sure we have a good variation. I've jotted that down, so I'll definitely bring that back to our next work group meeting.
We might even come up with some, sort of like a raffle items, you know, where you give a ticket, and then pull tickets at the end, maybe we could find some gifts to bestow on people who are coming.
We can definitely work with our media and communications office and, and all about that, 'cause in HR, you know, we don't raffle gifts, but, yes, ma'am, exactly, exactly.
But yeah, now's an opportunity. If any of you have a clever name that you think would be more fitting-
Yes.
Now's the time.
Exactly.
Otherwise, we're, like, right now, if you, if you have an idea.
Oh, yes.
Well, of course. We have email, you know.
Most definitely. And we'll, we'll, we're looking to schedule our next meeting in the next week or two, and so we'll reach out to both of our board members and coordinate all of our schedules and, and come together. It was a very productive meeting for first meeting, and then I'm pretty sure we'll have even more to update afterwards.
So, you, I think in a roundabout way, answered what wasn't a question, but I'm- but I'm thinking out loud to myself, as far as subject matter, like you mentioned something about some things being timed with the budget season, but other things, I mean, is this part of what you still have to flush out? If it's going to be open season, you know, or will the meetings have more specific focus?
And so, you, when you really look at it, you can go either way. If you're looking at the possibility of having three general meetings, if you make them totally specific, but as an individual you are unable to attend, does that mean then that you don't share your comments? So, the whole idea was when we have these opportunities to gather together and hear from our employees, is that they are able to share freely what it is they have on their minds, hopefully bring some possible solutions and recommendations to the table as well, listen to their other colleagues, have HR staff as best as we can address questions or concerns they may have, and obviously the opportunity to also leave their input through a feedback card. And so, the idea was not to limit the participation. And sometimes if you only want to address a certain topic, you in essence are limiting it. But because this is the first go-around, we've had a little experience in this area. We're going to hone in on what we felt worked well, but also modifying it and changing it to meet the needs that we have now today.
And I'm sure the first year will be very helpful in determining a best approach moving forward. There was a question about if there's a policy update needed. I mean, you indicated the two policies. Is it possible to discuss now if a policy update is needed?
We can. If you look at the.
Since we have the time.
Yes, ma'am. And if you're looking at the policies, the two policies right now, because they are policies, they're more overarching, they're not regulations, so they don't go into any great fine detail. The two policies basically indicate, in terms of Policy 2-15, that the school board and the superintendent endorse a two-way system of open communication among employees. And then, with some more verbiage behind it, and then it talks about Policy 4-8, the employee input process. And so, we always, as we look to bring about any new practice or make change to any new practice, we always want to make sure we stay aligned to the policies. So, I don't know that necessarily anything will need to be updated, but we know that that's on the forefront of our minds, just in case.
So, it wasn't a formal discussion yet at the work group level, Mrs. Lanetti or?
Yeah, ma'am, it's going to depend what you do.
So, here we, we're left here with another half hour before the next session, so we need some help here. Well, we've tried to do that in the past, and this is a little different because we have a tour planned. So, if it gets said, okay with everybody, if we just move on to the next session? And me, oh, I just thought of one more thing, though. Perhaps if I could ask at the next work group meeting, if you have, if you establish an assessment piece to this, you know, like, at what time in the next year would you, I guess, assess or come back to the board for an assessment of how this process worked in this first year? Was that appropriate?
Yes, ma'am.
Carolyn, sorry. Just so that I'm, we're all on the same page. Do you have the schedule of when additional meetings are and when the board will get an update about next, you know, next steps, next steps?
Right. So, when, in looking at the timeline, we recognize that our teachers and many of our employees return back to the buildings in August, the late August timeframe. So, we recognize it may be a little bit of a challenge to have as many meetings as we would be hopeful for this first year. But knowing that the survey is conducted every other year, and we did recently just have the employee input survey. We also had the data from the compensation philosophy that we recognize that will give us a little bit more time also to establish meetings. But we would like to have a couple of meetings this year. And as Ms. Anderson indicated, September tends to be a little hectic in a school building, but definitely we feel like we could have something in October, November timeframe before we really get into the holidays for all of our employees. So, we, that would be an opportunity as well for us to put into practice, whatever it is we finalize, and then get some feedback on it. But I think, and I'm always hopeful, that just the opportunity for our employees to be able to come to the table, to come to a meeting, to be able to share what they feel would make their work environment even stronger, I don't think you can do any wrong when you go that way. So, I think we'll definitely have some solid processes in place. And we will take the lead in HR in conjunction with other departments, but we primarily will take the lead. So, we'll make sure that the information is advertised, the dates, the venue. If you're unable to attend, who you can contact, other ways of getting your voice across other than just face-to-face or attending the virtual meetings.
Sounds good. And could, and I don't know how appropriate it is or isn't. Could the board be apprised or available to attend and hear? Or is it more appropriate for, you know, if employees are going to feel more comfortable speaking when the board members are not there, then that's fine as well, but wanted to.
And I'm going to remind you, once more than two of you are together, all of a sudden you've now constituted a meeting, we have to be careful.
Right.
Thank you. That's true.
And I will assure you, although we do not plan to do any recordings, we will take good notes. Obviously, we will omit names and all. But just like here today, we'll have extensive notes that we'll take and we'll be able to share that feedback with the work group as well as the full board in itself.
I was chuckling because I was thinking the exact same thing as Ms. Owens, is that, you know, especially if we get some feedback in October, it might be appropriate for us to, you know, apprise the board of what people are saying. You know, maybe either the beginning of November or the last meeting of October. If we have a meeting in the beginning of October, we may be able to apprise the board in the second meeting of October. So, those are all possibilities and I don't see why not because we need, we need to be apprised of it and be aware of it as soon as we hear something, especially if some ideas that we know can be fixed.
Exactly. And I will say, in celebrating my first year, working with the Fine Staff and Human Resources, our employees definitely feel very comfortable in reaching out to us, whether it's on an individual basis, whether it's face-to-face, email, and sitting down and having conversations. And I think it's because they don't, they don't see us and they should not see us in a supervisory role, that we are Human Resources and we are here and it's all about employees and making the work environment the best place that it can be. And so, we want to make sure that people understand that although we are establishing these meetings, that does not take away from the day-to-day interactions that we have with anyone who would like to have a conversation with, whether it be myself or any member of the Fine Team.
All right. We thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So, we bring on Ms. Allen now, our Chief of Communications and Community Engagement.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I'm very excited to introduce Dr. Adman Alexander, who's going to present about the wonderful work with Family and Community Engagement Office done this year and plans for the future. This is the mic.
All right. Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Spence, Chair Rye, and Vice Chair Melnick. I am Dr. Adman Alexander, the Director of the Office of Family and Community Engagement and the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. I'm excited to share information about, or excuse me, I'm excited to share another update about the Face Office. At our last update, we shared with you how family and community outreach can be accomplished within the school division through its mission statement of partnering with the entire community, empowering every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. This year, our update will continue to have components of the mission statement, but you will also be informed on how the Office of Family and Community Engagement institutes VBCPS's core values by putting students and families first, seeking growth through awareness, understanding, acceptance, and advocacy, being open to change from learned information and the lived experiences of others. You will hear how the office is committed to doing great work together through internal and external collaborative efforts from mutually beneficial partners, all who are striving to have a collective impact on the community. And last, and most importantly, you will hear how we value differences by actively listening to others and building relationships. The aim of the Face Office is to promote access to information and resources necessary to ensure academic success as well as improve the social well-being of families and students. The Face Office works to leverage community relationships and promote active engagement of the community in all of our schools. As a reminder, all the work of the office is to support Goal V, mutually supportive partnerships. Today's presentation will be broken into four sections. Connecting Community with Schools, which will be presented by Ms. Jen McGowan, School and Community Partnership Coordinator, and Ms. Debbie Hughes, Coordinator of the Education Foundation. The next section will be Family Outreach and Connecting Resources, which will be presented by Ms. Leslie Ricchio and Ms. Rachel Thompson, Family Outreach Representatives. And we will conclude the presentation with Kathleen Newchuck, Kathy, who, Newcheck, sorry, Kathleen, Title III English Learner Coordinator in the Department of Teaching and Learning. She will be sharing information about the Family and Community Engagement Welcome Center. I will now turn it over to Ms. McGowan. Oh, I keep forgetting about the slide.
Oh, it's tiny.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jen McGowan and I serve as Division's School and Community Partnerships Coordinator. In that role, I work with organizations in the community to support our students, their families, and our division staff. Specifically, my role supports Compass to 2025, Goal V, by connecting the business community to our schools. Virginia Beach City Public Schools Partners in Education Program supports collaborations between schools and organizations that promote students' academic and personal growth. Partnerships are mutually beneficial arrangements designed to extend learning experiences through community resources. Our more than 2,200 partnerships are categorized by one or more areas of wellness. Working with the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, these areas of wellness are then categorized to indicate which of the Compass to 2025 navigational markers that partnership supports, including student well-being, real-world learning, and career exploration and experiences. You can see in this chart that more than half of our partnerships support student well-being, followed by about a third that support career exploration and experiences, and the remainder supporting real-world learning. By categorizing partnerships by area of wellness, I can see where we may have a deficit for a particular area of wellness and I can work with the school-based community engagement liaisons to increase partnerships in those areas. To make the data more accessible to other departments and to improve reporting, we will move the partnership database to Salesforce this summer. I'm very excited about that, by the way. At that time, we'll be able to categorize partnerships by profit or nonprofit, government, female-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned, and small or micro-business. These categories will allow us to determine if our partnerships represent an equitable cross-section of our community. Community partners from businesses, military commands, faith-based groups, and civic organizations work with schools to design innovative educational opportunities to meet the unique needs of our schools and students. By matching goal, student, school goals with the expertise, materials, and financial resources and skills of the organization, partnerships enrich curriculum, and enhance learning experiences, it extends our teachers' capacity to meet the individual needs of students and increases the engagement between schools and the community. So, let's hear directly from our partners about some of these mutually beneficial experiences.
Hi, I'm Sabell Galindes, Community Engagement Director at Siders American Dream Theater. As an arts organization partnering with VB schools, we have the opportunity to touch young people at a critical time in their lives, ensuring they experience a live performing arts event or a participatory open-mic event. We're making memories with them, not only for the moment, but memories that will last a lifetime. Memories that say, "I belong in this space, onstage and off." Thank you.
Through Girls on the Run Hampton Roads Partnership with VB schools, during the 2021-2022 school year, 441 girls at 26 schools participated in our program, which establishes lifelong healthy habits while instilling critical social-emotional skills at a time when girls need it the most. 103 VB schools, teachers, and staff delivered the Girls on the Run curriculum, providing a safe and interactive space for girls to connect with each other, learn valuable skills such as how to cope when things get tough, and practicing positivity, and most importantly, to have fun.
Hi, my name's Amy Mountain. I'm Business Development with Langley Federal Credit Union. I've been working with Virginia Beach City Public Schools for close to 20 years now in a couple of different roles. And it's so exciting, all the changes that are happening and all the new involvement that we're being able to do since merging with Langley Federal Credit Union. It's been 20 years. I'm looking forward to another 20 years. We just went ahead and placed an order for 1,000 backpacks to support the Care Fair. That'd be the second year in a row. And more and more of our employees are getting out in the schools and volunteering and giving back. So, we're just so very grateful for the partnership that we have and thank you for everything that you do for the kids and for the schools. And enjoy your summer. We hope you get some time to enjoy yourself. Take care. Thanks so much.
Okay, so this isn't in the script, but those three partners represent a female-owned business, a military-owned business, and one of our nonprofit partners. So, we tried to pick a variety. And they were kind enough to video themselves doing that at kind of the last minute for me, so I appreciate them. All right. So, connecting with our community is a crucial part of being able to understand and meet the needs of our VBCPS students and their families. August 7, 2021, VB schools made that connection with more than 2,000 people at Pembroke Mall with our inaugural Back to School Care Fair. Side note, that's more people than have been in Pembroke Mall in like 20 years. I miss Pembroke Mall. I know. So, God bless Pembroke Mall, R.I.P. But anyway, okay. I know. So, anyway, dozens of VB school staff from multiple departments attended, including six translators who translated in three languages. These staff were joined by more than 40 community partners to share all that the division and the community have to offer students and their families. So, if you're impressed with those numbers, let's talk about a few more. Nearly 1,000 backpacks, Amy mentioned those, were donated by Virginia Beach Schools Federal Credit Union, which is now Langley Federal Credit Union, if you didn't know that, and Coastal Edge. Nearly 2,000 water bottles were donated by the Hartford and Clark Nixon and handed out by the Virginia Beach Fire Department. 300 pizzas were enjoyed by attendees, compliments of Papa John's Pizza. Hundreds of haircuts were given by. Hundreds of haircuts were given by students of Rudy and Kelly Academy and Legacy Barber Academy. Hundreds of vision and hearing screenings were given by the Lions Clubs International and Coastal Audiology and Hearing Aid Center. One electric bus attracted potential recruits to our trike team of drivers, and the crowd was entertained by the Green Run High School Band and the Salem VPAA instrumental strand. So, this year promises to reach even more families, not at Pembroke Mall, at Lansdowne High School. Join us August 13 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lansdowne High School for the 2022 Back to School Care Fair. We already have 78 exhibitors signed up, but not all of our departments are. So, if your departments aren't signed up to be there, get in touch with me, please, we'd love to have you there. The point of this is to let people know all of the amazing things that Virginia Beach Schools has to offer. Okay, so students received back-to-school items at the Care Fair, but what do we do the rest of the year? We assist families through My Friend's Closet. My Friend's Closet is based on an IB project from a 2015 Princess Anne High School graduate. The idea is that children across the division can be provided with clothing, food, and school supplies, maybe even a desk, and with no stigma or shame attached. When asked where they got their cool new outfit or backpack, they can confidently say, "From My Friend's Closet." The contents of the closet change based on student needs. The FACE Team conducts a biannual student needs assessment that drives our decisions on items to stock. Items are obtained through donations from community partners. When needed, supplies are not available through donations. We are able to purchase items using funds from a generous grant, the Student Needs Fund, from United for Children, and initiative through the United Way. My Friend's Closet is only accessed once all other options have been exhausted. Social work and counselors contact partners for assistance first, and when that assistance is not available, they call us. We then reach out to other partners for assistance and finally reach into that closet right here in this building. Since its inception in spring of 2021, My Friend's Closet and the Student Needs Fund has provided 25 nights of emergency housing, provided emergency food and household items for dozens of families, provided seasonally appropriate clothing for nearly 100 students, and provided school supplies for hundreds of children. Let's talk about volunteers and how they support students and staff. We're excited to implement our volunteer system called Volunteer Tracker. Volunteer Tracker is a new way to complete a volunteer application and training, including a review of volunteer-related school board policies, all online. Volunteers will be able to select schools where they wish to serve, identify activities for volunteering, and log volunteer hours. Students can use Volunteer Tracker to track their volunteer hours, too. We have lots of students signed up, actually. So, here's how it works. Volunteers register and complete training and an online application, just one per volunteer, no need to complete one for every school. Those of you who are parents know that you've had to fill it out at every school, you don't have to do that anymore. All right, approval is instant. Volunteer Tracker then matches volunteers to opportunities. Next, volunteers review volunteer opportunities and sign up. Volunteer Tracker then sends reminders about the opportunities they've selected. Hours are automatically recorded, or if not linked to a posted opportunity, they can be entered manually. And finally, volunteers are recognized for their efforts with small tokens of appreciation and at higher levels, gifts from our partners. This year, the goal is to have all schools add their volunteer opportunities to Volunteer Tracker so that we can begin to use this division-wide system to its fullest capacity. As school board members, your hours count, too. Dr. Alexander is going to give you a card to show how to get started. So, while he's handing those out, I will turn the presentation over to Debbie. Debbie Hughes, Coordinator of the Virginia Beach Education Foundation.
Hello. Jen and I work very collaboratively, obviously. I would like to think of her as the people and tangible items, and me as the money. So, I love my job, I love getting money, anyone will tell you that. My name is Debbie Hughes, I'm Coordinator with the Education Foundation. I started with the Education Foundation and the School Division back in 2001. You may know that the Education Foundation is the only sole nonprofit organization for Virginia Beach Schools to raise money for Virginia Beach Schools and also provide hands-on learning opportunities for students. However, you may not have known that we've been in existence for 30 years, and that 30 years, the organization grew from a purely vo-tech entity to support, to supporting K-12 students' innovation and encompassing the whole child. Starting in 2001, the Education Foundation Board invested in schools for students to learn by doing through their Adopt A+ Grants Program. The Adopt A+ Grants Program is an overall program encompassing several different types of grants we offer. The investment started small with $14,000 and has grown to $200,000, $203,000 last year. As you can see, we've grown in the amount of money offered by also adding the different types of grants available. In 2001, Building Futures Grants were awarded up to $1,000 each. In 2006, the name and the amounts changed to Innovative Learning Grants, up to $2,000, and a more lucrative grant was added, the school-wide grant, which is $2,001 to $5,000. In addition to two other grants, principals can apply for a $20,000 School Plus Community Super Grant. The project has to include at least one community partner, and every student in the school must have access to program activities. Again, another way that Jen and I worked closely together. You may also notice that when teachers were navigating online classrooms, they also submitted proposals to fund innovative projects in the 2020-2021 school year, a year when we still awarded $172,945. This is just a representation of the last five years, but as you can see, there's been obviously a significant growth since our first year of awarding grants with only $14,000. Since program inception, a total of $2.3 million has been distributed to Virginia Beach City Public Schools in Adopt A+ Grants. Another $200,000 will be distributed this upcoming school year. Pictured are three of this year's past 72 projects funded by the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. Tried to represent a elementary, middle, and high school. We're very fortunate in being able to fund very innovative classroom projects. Another way we support students and teachers, and how the foundation first started 30 years ago, is the house that students built. We're self-funding our current 12th House project at Indiana Avenue, 1512 Indiana Avenue, near N.A.S. Oceana, and will reinvest the proceeds from the sale into future student projects, either homes or grants. We're fortunate that one of our Education Foundation Board members put us in touch with the City Real Estate Office, for which City Council approved our bid to buy the lot for $50,000. We have another approved site on the same street, also for $50,000, and will begin building once the 12th House is complete. Students gain on-the-job experience through the Virginia Beach Education Foundation House Project. In March 2020, the 11th House sold for $409,000. Donations of labor and time from partners allow the Education Foundation to make more money on the sale. If you know of any construction, trade businesses wishing to help bolster their future workforce, please share this project, and you can also share it with me or Dr. Alexander at another time. Like the Adopt A+ Grants Program, the House Students Built offers hands-on learning opportunities for students in the construction trades at the Technical and Career Education Center. I'm going to show you a little bit about the House project in this next video.
The mission of the Education Foundation is to help fund innovative experiences in the classroom. The House project gives those students an opportunity to put their hands on a real project, get them outside of the classroom, get them outside the lab space, and give them real-world experience.
The proceeds of the House, once the House is sold, go into the foundation's money that we give for teacher grants.
Back in 1991, was initial one. We have raised $790,000 from the sale of the 10 previous houses, which is incredible.
On this House project, we've had masonry, plumbing, carpentry, electricity, HVAC, and landscaping students.
We have a number of organizations throughout the community that not only come in and donate their time and their professional expertise, but donate materials as well. Our geothermal units were donated by Toanna Wells, as well as tankless hot water heaters donated by Kellen Mechanical.
So, this house is 2,400 square feet, has a two-car garage, four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. It's environmentally friendly with a tankless hot water heater and geothermal HVAC units, fully landscaped.
One of the things as far as careers for students go is that they're not all going to go to college, but those that don't go to college, the careers can be very, very lucrative in all of our trades.
My work at the House prepared me to be in a work environment like Atomic, going into a house and having to problem-solve and figure out how to install these fixtures and run the gas line, and kind of just got me ready for the professional world.
After high school, I went to major in construction management engineering technology. I learned how to put a sink together, I learned how to wire a silicon.
Our house-building project does a lot for building students' confidence.
I enjoyed the, working on the drainage of this house because it's what I've had the most experience with outside, and I think I'm really good with it.
Working on the house and things like that are definitely confidence boosters. You know, you don't feel like walking in like, wow, this is the first time I've done this. You can walk in with the confidence knowing, I've done this before, I know I know how to do it, so I know I have the skills it takes to get the job done.
They have to learn how to interpret plans, and not just in plumbing, but in all of our trades, they learn how to work in real life. So, when they go to get jobs with some of our companies, they already have some experience.
When driving by the house, it was just one of those moments where you said to yourself, "Yeah, I did that."
I really believe the foundation's really helping people to realize their goals don't always have to be college-oriented, they can be skill-oriented and trade-oriented, too.
These businesses that help us aren't just some business that throws it in, we've become friends with all of them, but it also allows the students to see beyond the walls of their school, that they look out and they can actually find out that people that run businesses are real people, they care about their future.
Many of these students have gone on to intern at some of these wonderful businesses that donate their time and materials to us, like VB Homes and Kellen Mechanical.
We try to get as many trades, professional trades and products in here at a discounted price in order to drive the costs down to increase the profit at the time of sale, and all that money goes back into funding the teacher grants that come out.
Thank you to all the businesses that funded this, I don't think I would have had the opportunity otherwise.
If the Virginia Beach Education Foundation was here and I could speak with them, I would just tell them how thankful I was that they organized all this and brought us all together so we can make something really special happen.
So, hopefully that gave you a good flavor of what's going on with the Technical and Career Education Center, and just one other thing I would note. Daniel Ramos, who was photographed in there, he's our HVAC instructor with the Tech Center. He was Overall Citywide Teacher of the Year two, three years ago. And Laura Yates, who was also featured, was one of the finalists, too. So, really great talent working with the Education Foundation. One of the last components of the foundation is our Beach Bags Program, and this is also one where we partner, and we use Volunteer Tracker so that we have volunteers packing bags every week. Approximately 40% of the students and Virginia Beach City Public Schools are on free and reduced lunch. Many students rely on school cafeterias for breakfast and lunch without weekend and school breaks. That is where the Education Foundation meets the needs of our child by providing a bag of 10 shelf-stable easy-open food items to nourish students' growth and development. 100%, again, I want to say that, 100% of all contributions, monetary or tangible, go to feed these students, as identified by anyone in or out of the school system. Volunteers pack 800 to 1,200 bags weekly at the VBCPS Distribution Center, just one example of how the student, the School Division, and the Virginia Beach Education Foundation partner to help students. Since July 2021, more than 37,000 beach bags were given to students, doubling the number from the prior year. Yes, there is a need to feed students in Virginia Beach. The future goals of the Virginia Beach Education Foundation include increasing awareness of the Adopt A+ Grants. So, with the awareness of the Adopt A+ Grants with the School Division employees, as well as potential funders, a redesign of the VBEF webpages, visits with schools who haven't submitted applications in several years, and the creation of a new video showing the ease to apply are in the works. There will also be mentioned that grant applications are reviewed blindly, omitting any reference to any school, so that all submissions have equal opportunity for funding. In addition, VBF will market the great opportunities through the House Project, including partnerships, mentoring, and future employment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Thompson, and this is my colleague Leslie Ricchio, and we are two of the FACE Offices' six family outreach representatives, and we're so excited to have the opportunity to speak with you all today and share the work that we're doing in this office. Our four newest family outreach representatives are funded through CARES Act and ESAR funds with a mandate to provide outreach and resources for vulnerable populations. So, the work in our family outreach representatives centers around learning the needs of the community and connecting our families with the resources they need to be successful both in and outside of the classroom. One thing we focus on is ensuring that all families feel welcome in Virginia Beach Schools. We do this in a variety of ways, including creating family voice groups, advocating for language access, connecting families with resources, and providing an additional layer of support for all of our school communities. The Harvard Scholar and Family Engagement Pioneer, Dr. Karen Mapp, reports that family engagement in schools contributes to positive student outcomes, including improved child and student achievement, decreased disciplinary issues, improved parent-teacher and teacher-student relationships, and improved school environment. These outcomes mirror our own goals for students across the division, as outlined in the Compass to 2025 Strategic Framework, and provide a basis for our new FACE Model designation. We believe that a welcoming environment for all families, a diverse and highly-trained staff that knows how to engage with and support our families, high levels of involvement, and expanded opportunities for family engagement can truly revolutionize a school's culture, leading to positive outcomes across the board. Today, we are going to share information about several of these initiatives with you, as well as testimonials from parents and staff members we've had the opportunity to work with over the last two years. But first, I'd like to turn things over to Leslie to share a little bit more about Family Voice.
Thank you, Rachel.
Maybe I'm going to do that.
There we go. One of our most important initiatives is our Family Voice Groups. These groups were created so that we can learn directly from families instead of assuming that we already know their needs. Their voices are extremely powerful, and we have learned so much from them over the past two years. But before I go into further detail about our groups, I would like to invite you to hear from Elsie Harold Land, one of the parents in my Old Donation School Family Voice Empowerment Group.
I would like to share why the ODS Family Voice Empowerment Group has been important to me as a parent, which is ultimately beneficial.
Can we get that volume up? Do I need to do it here? Okay, thank you.
I would like to share why the ODS Family Voice Empowerment Group has been important to me as a parent, which is ultimately beneficial to Old Donation School and the greater community. The group provides fellowship with ODS parents and guardians and the amazing Leslie Ricchio, who facilitates the group. It offers listening ears for a parent of a child with a unique learning style, and it adds to our circle of support during these challenging times in the midst of a pandemic. Additionally, the group creates a consistent, reliable space for sharing family experiences, and it generates additional opportunities for learning through the external organizations that have provided topic-specific sessions for the groups. Thank you for creating the Family Voice Empowerment Groups and understanding the power and benefit of the voices of the families you serve. of the voices of the families you serve.
Our Voice Empowerment Groups are held with families and were created to help us learn directly from them and the members of the community. They provide families with a safe space to have their voices heard. We meet monthly and through these groups, we use what we learn to determine trends and work towards finding ways to break down barriers for students and their families. We hope to eventually have a Family Voice Group at each school so that our office can work to find trends across the division and meet needs more efficiently. We currently have 12 Family Voice Empowerment Groups, including a Hispanic Voice Group, which Rachel will talk about today. In the FACE Office, we are proud to have a variety of initiatives in the community. Many of these are a direct result of feedback we've received from our Family Voice Groups. For example, parents and guardians in our groups were concerned about the lack of social interactions their students had during the pandemic. They were worried that it negatively impacted their mental well-being and increased levels of anxiety and depression in students. We contacted our partners at CHKD to bring in a panel of experts to address these concerns via a webinar specifically for our Family Voice Group members. We've offered virtual game nights to allow school communities the chance to come together for something fun to strengthen relationships and make families feel more connected to the school and each other. We've also joined schools in holding community conversations where families are given the opportunity to give feedback directly to school principals. Together with the Interfaith Alliance at the Beach, also known as the IAB, we found a faith community willing to open its doors to students who needed a safe place to go during the school day when school buildings were not open. This church provided free childcare, Wi-Fi, and virtual learning assistance to families and arranged for school breakfast and lunch to be delivered to the students learning there. Also during virtual learning, we were able to work with the Food Bank and the IAB to deliver food to students learning remotely who may not have had access to nutritious meals otherwise. Lastly, we work with schools to coordinate events to bring communities together and to help families to feel invested in not just their current school, but the schools they will continue on to within their feeder pattern. These are just a few of the many community initiatives we are excited about in the FACE Office. I'll now turn it over to Rachel to highlight the positive impacts the Hispanic Family Voice Group has had on our division.
Thank you, Leslie. So as I mentioned earlier, the four positions in our office are grant-funded through CARES Act ESAR funds, and part of the mandate with those grants is outreach to underserved or vulnerable communities, specifically English learner or multilingual households. So we have two Family Voice Groups that specifically target Spanish-speaking families. One is Hispanic Voice, which is a division-wide Spanish language group. And then we have DLI Voice as well, which serves the dual-language immersion program families in both Spanish and English, that's a bilingual group. We're grateful for the relationships we've built with the community through these groups, and we have learned so much over the last two years about their achievements, experiences, and their concerns. Before I speak about some of the initiatives that have been created as a direct result of the feedback we've had from those families, I would like for you to hear from Anna, who is one of the mothers who participates in our Hispanic Voice Group.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Anna y soy madre de familia de dos estudiantes de Virginia Beach. Quiero agradecer a la Oficina de FACE por la gran oportunidad que nos ha dado de tener una persona que hable español. De esa manera, me he dado cuenta que hemos tenido la gran oportunidad de acercarnos más a la escuela. También ha hecho un impacto grandísimo. Por qué? Porque nosotros como latinos nos sentimos más cercanos a la escuela y ha hecho que nosotros nos acerquemos a la escuela para poder ayudar a nuestros hijos a que tengan un servicio académico mucho mejor. Gracias FACE por esta gran oportunidad que nos diste. Hasta luego.
So that just makes me so happy, I don't know about you. And this is not in the script either, forgive me, but I was just out with the reading bus this morning at Colony Mobile Home Park where a lot of our Hispanic families live that participate in this group and got to do a bilingual reading storytime with them. And so these relationships are real, they're dynamic, and it's really amazing to see how much that trust has grown just over the past year. So as Leslie mentioned earlier, FACE does have a variety of initiatives that are a direct result of the feedback we receive in Family Voice. And I like to highlight a few things that have come from Hispanic Voice. First, we collaborated with the pre-K team to translate their packet and application into our top four critical language areas, that's Spanish, Tagalog, Mandarin Chinese, and Vietnamese, as well as providing Voyness training for family engagement specialists who now regularly use that service during their screenings. We also learned from our families that many of them did not even realize that VB schools had access to Voyness interpretation services, that's the phone line. And so we created a poster that is now posted prominently at the entrance of every school building, letting families know, again in our top four languages, that that service is available to them. And we provided Voyness training to all of our Title I front office staff, and we offer a welcoming all-students training to any school community that's interested in participating. And that training covers several communication strategies that include Voyness and best practices for working with English learner families. The ESL Family Liaison Program is a coordinated effort with the ESL Program and made possible through a Title III grant. We have these family liaisons in our top nine ESL population schools, providing an additional level of support for our multilingual families and ensuring they receive the same information, resources, and opportunities as every other family. Kathleen Kahun Nuchuk, who's going to talk to you in just a moment, will speak more about this initiative later. One of our most exciting recent initiatives is the formation of the Volunteer Language Ambassador Program. Our inaugural cohort in fall of 2021 included 41 multilingual staff members in 31 of our schools. We're currently recruiting for the second cohort. I'm really excited to share that we currently have 63 new volunteers signed up for the fall from 21 schools, and it will include bilingual staff from SAB, the Plaza Annex, and the FACE Center as well. As of the first day of school this coming September, we will have 23 languages represented by our language ambassadors. And my goal, our goal, is to have at least one language ambassador in every Virginia Beach school building by the 2023-24 school year. The language ambassadors are a first level of support for our English language community and their families and model multilingual and multicultural intelligence for the whole school community. They wear their language ambassador lanyards and a pin, which you can see in the image above, it says what language they speak in that language. So it's very easy for students and visitors to identify them and the languages that they speak. These volunteers are provided with a services and resources flow chart and training to help them better connect students with the supports that they need. In addition to providing basic information for students and staff about school, they also remind staff to use Voyness interpretation services for any official communication or conferences, and they serve as a bridge between their school community and the FACE Office. Leslie?
Ms. McGowan already touched on the back-to-school care fair that we had last year and will be holding again at Landstown High School on August 13th. But another really exciting event we had last fall was the Restock and Roll Drive-Thru Supply Giveaway. All students and families were invited to drive through the parking lot of the FACE Building to receive school supplies, beach bags, fresh produce, and other non-perishable food. Several community partners made it possible for us to be able to provide these items to over 150 families. We plan to hold two Restock and Roll events this year, one in the fall and one in the spring. We hope these supply giveaways will provide students and families with essential items that, when missing, can be a barrier to learning. This is my excitement, like Rachel's language ambassador thing. This is my baby, it seems like.
You have our passion projects.
Yes, we do. Another resource we've been working on in the FACE Office is providing student supply racks in all schools. Data from our Student Needs Assessment showed that school personnel thought student needs had changed drastically since the pandemic. Needs that once included requests like materials for robotics supplies have now changed to more essential items like school supplies, toiletries, and food. After learning this information, we worked with counselors, social workers, and administrators to learn what would be the most needed items. From there, we leveraged our partnership with the United Way of Southampton Roads and received funding to put student supply racks in each high school, the Adult Learning Center, ATC, and the Tech Center. These racks include free student supplies such as shampoo, deodorant, pencils, paper, and more, as you can see in the picture above. Students are able to take what they need whenever they need it without question. We're beyond proud that this initiative has grown, and we now have these racks installed in 83 of our 86 schools. So that's a lot of students that can access a lot of really great stuff. These racks are just one way that we connect the community with resources they need. Dr. Alexander will now tell you about a few more of our division-wide initiatives focusing on providing access to information and resources.
Thanks. So supportive, guys. All right. Another avenue that we have used to connect resources to the community is our Family Connection Platform. The goal of the Family Connection Workshops are to provide an awareness of various support systems for Virginia Beach families and students, and assist parents to make informed decisions about their VB CPS students' options. This year, the FACE Office hosted over 20 Family Connections, ranging from Academy Information, college funding for military students, college funding options for families, CHKD's coping with the loss during the holidays, a 3E series of enlist, enroll, and employ options for students and families, tutoring program options, and understanding financial literacy were just a few of the sessions that were offered. During some of these sessions, we had as many as 200 to 300 viewers. Another resource we have created for students and families is our resource site, which can be accessed using the QR code you see here or the address below the QR code. This site is consistently or constantly updated and has a variety of useful resources for families, including special needs support, military support, and many different resources to help with student and family well-being, such as food and housing assistance, mental health support, and financial and childcare assistance. This page has had over 16,000 clicks and over 5,000 views, and it's only been existing for about a year. On the previous slide, you saw the resources site flyer in English. We proudly also have this flyer available in our four critical languages Rachel mentioned earlier, Vietnamese, Mandarin, Spanish, and Tagalog. We want every family to feel included and have access to the resource, to this resource site. These flyers are also available for schools through the FACE Office. The FACE Office also has a monthly newsletter called FaceTime, which spotslight community partners, local events, volunteer opportunities, and more.
Dr. Alexander, how is that newsletter distributed?
Online, like it's through a Smore account, so you just sign up, but we can send it to you, so you can sign up. And social media, thank you, Jen. The FACE Office also offers, excuse me, the FACE Office also coordinates a partnership group called VB Care Connect. The mission of this group is to promote and expand equitable access to services and programs that supports families and students through mutual supportive partnerships. The group is working to have a sustainable and collective impact on our community. The collaborative group is composed of internal and external stakeholders and community organizations such as the VB CPS Social Workers, Title I Supports, the United Way, Grow Smart, the Interfaith Alliance at the Beach, and Parks and Recreation. And finally, we would like to share another testimonial from Dr. Leslie Itner, Principal of Plaza Middle School, who has partnered with the FACE Office to begin the phases of having a sustainable, excuse me, sustaining impact on our school community through involvement and engagement efforts.
Hi, my name is Leslie Itner and I'm the principal at Plaza Middle School. One of the first items on my agenda as a principal was to connect with the FACE Office. In my first year of building trust with our community, the FACE Office has held community forums and meetings with me, offered resources and assistance to our families in need, supported us in our aspirations to become a FACE Model School, and participated with representatives in our joint feeder school event Plaza Palooza, an event being held in collaboration with our neighborhood feeder elementary schools. In addition to this, Leslie Ricchio has organized a parent voice group with stakeholders from our community and frequently communicated with me about ways I can help make improvements at the school level as a result of their feedback. We are so lucky to have a partner in the FACE Office, and I can attest to just how much it has helped our school to change for the better.
Mr. Dalton?
So this concludes our presentation of the Office of Family and Community Engagement. The FACE Office is located in the Family and Community Engagement Center at Plaza Annex. The goal of the FACE Center is to be a one-stop shop for our community to get the information and resources that they need. I will now turn it over to Ms. Kathleen Kahun Nuchuk to speak about the FACE Center. Kathleen?
Thank you, Dr. Alexander. Okay, good afternoon. As part of that one-stop shop that Dr. Alexander mentioned as the goal, we're excited to let you know that an international welcome center is in the planning process with an anticipated opening date of October 2022. The objective of this welcome center is to provide families new to the United States with central support for school division registration, English proficiency testing, and course enrollment at their schools. We based our staffing and spacing needs for the welcome center on what we know are necessary student and family supports, with the intent of alleviating some of these responsibilities from schools. We have reviewed how other school divisions across Virginia have established welcome centers and have structured their staffing and support. Over the past two years, FACE staff and ESL staff in the Department of Teaching and Learning worked in collaboration to visit several locations, including Henrico County Schools, Loudoun County, and Fairfax County Schools, to observe their welcome center structures and processes. These visits informed our own planning for space, staffing, and process. Currently, when students new to Virginia Beach and/or the United States who are potential English learners register in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, the entire process happens at the individual school. Each registrar is responsible for the registration process, each school counseling office is responsible for enrolling students in the appropriate courses, and each school is responsible for checking records, requesting documents from the student's previous school, and requesting translation of any transcripts if necessary. In addition to English proficiency testing, the purpose of the welcome center will be to support schools with these responsibilities. By doing so, we can better ensure a consistent process and strong central support for new English learner families to address the unique needs they often have as they become acclimated to the VB CPS school and community culture, which will be especially helpful as we begin to receive more families from the Ukraine. The International Welcome Center will be housed in the new section of the Plaza Annex. We will have one large room on the second floor that will be used for both testing and for cubicle space for the welcome center staff. For staffing, we have identified four positions that will be responsible for a successful welcome center implementation. The bilingual Spanish registrar will welcome families, support the registration process, and work with schools and families to schedule students for English proficiency testing. A welcome center 12-month counselor will support transcript translation and interpretation needs, conduct records checks, meet with families to review transcripts and complete educational history, and work with students and schools to enroll students in the appropriate grade level and courses. Two family outreach representatives will meet with families at schools to bridge the welcome centrally and at the school level, and they will serve as additional graduation coaching support specific to high school English learners. We will continue to have three ESL Test Examiner TEA positions who administer the WIDA screener to incoming students, conduct records checks, and assist with administering the Access for L's yearly assessment. The ESL Test Examiner positions are budgeted for and filled annually. The counseling position was approved as part of the fiscal year 23 local budget. The registrar and family outreach positions are additional positions that will be funded for the 2223 school year through ESAR funds that have already been approved for this purpose. We will request that these three additional positions be added to the local budget for subsequent school years. While we anticipate the process will be tweaked along the way to ensure the most efficient and effective process possible, this slide outlines the process we will establish for welcoming and registering English learner families new to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. As you can see in step one, families may begin their registration process online. When they visit their home school to finish registration, they complete the home language When they visit their homeschool to finish registration, they complete the home language survey. Moving on to step two, if a language other than, other than English is indicated on the home language survey and the family is new to the United States or from a non-WIDA state, the school registrar contacts the welcome center registrar to schedule a visit. WIDA is a consortium of states that utilizes same English language development standards and assessments. Virginia is a WIDA state, and VB CPS uses the WIDA screener to determine language proficiency levels for incoming students. Students from other Virginia school divisions or WIDA states most likely already have English proficiency scores and therefore do not need to take an English proficiency test. If needed, the school registrar may contact the welcome center registrar for assistance in obtaining WIDA and any other potential language test scores. The welcome center counselor will help with this and also with all foreign transcript translations. In step three, while families are at the welcome center, parents will receive information about school and community resources from Face while students are administered the WIDA screener. In steps four and five of the process, the English learner family outreach representative will contact the family to ensure that they have all they need for the start of school. This may include assistance with ensuring families have registration paperwork, meeting families at their homeschools to assist with the transition process, and working throughout the year with high school English learners to ensure they are on track for graduation. These staff members will also work with the ESL school family liaisons at select schools to further support our English learner families. As Rachel Thompson mentioned earlier, the ESL School Family Liaison Program is a coordinated effort with Face made possible through our Title III grant. The liaisons are current school staff members who receive a stipend for serving as the school family liaison. We have these family liaisons in nine schools with a high number of English learners. The liaisons provide an additional level of support for our multilingual families and ensure they receive the same information, resources, and opportunities as every other family. Our liaisons conduct a needs assessment for English learner families. They hold family events in the fall and the spring, and they work with school counselors, teachers, administrators, and front office staff to ensure a high level of language access. We have several next steps to get the International Welcome Center up and running. We're working with the Department of School Division Services to outfit the identified space at Plaza Annex with furniture and technology. In July and August, we will work to hire staff, including a bilingual registrar and two English learner family outreach representatives who will also serve as the English learner graduation coaches. We will work with DOSL, DOT, and Student Support Services to schedule in-person communication regarding the purpose of the International Welcome Center and the role each of them plays in the process. We will also work with Face to develop a narrated overview that will be translated into our top four languages. This overview will contain information about Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the community, and it will be available for parents to view at the Face Center while their children are being screened. We will also work closely with Face to ensure families are connected with appropriate school and community resources. We anticipate the start of operations in the new space to be October first or sooner. As staff are hired, they may begin their work in temporary workspaces prior to October first. This concludes our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Alexander, do you have any comments on any of the, the most recent presentations? And the questions are open for any of them?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. And my, how Face have grown. Can you hear me?
Yep.
You've grown. And I'm just so excited. So I'm gonna get my thoughts together here. I'd just like to say, um, thank you for all that you've done and, and a little small, the small, the other things that did, your department did not tell you. They are at every school dedication, every groundbreaking, and every other event that goes on in the school decorating and doing all those things in the background. And I was wondering, I thought the schools were doing it, but it's your department, your ladies are getting together doing that, that work. I'd just like to say that, um, I'm real, um, excited and glad that the initiative with our community is still taking place, especially when you mention, uh, our Hispanic community. And I remember my first engagement with the Hispanic, Hispanic community there, Officer David Nieves. And they had their first Hispanic community day in October. But what's more exciting, what I'm trying to get to is that I'm glad that you have continued the engaging services with these community involving them as well. And I know that Principal Conya, that is her area, and I'm hoping that she is on board with you as well, having those works done there. Also, you did a good job in bringing the community together. You brought several community together at the Lynn Haven and Plaza, uh, Paula Buzozy event. Several communities were there, and they were seeing that, they appreciate, um, our division, bringing that, that, uh, those things together, building those initiatives through Face. And the theme of what I'm looking at, what you're doing here with Face is really, is fantastic. The theme is respect, trust, and you're bringing equity to all of these community and making them, uh, involve, making them feel engaged, making them vested in our division and all that we are doing. I could go on, but I know my other, other, um, colleagues have things to say to you. All the things that you have invited me to, that I was able to come, well, we invited everybody. I was able to show up and be there with you. I was just excited about it, and I can't say enough about Lisa and Jen, them being there as well and making us feel welcome at these things. Just thank you for growing and thank you for having these initiatives and doing more building with our community and bringing that equity piece in there and making us all vested here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Felton. Teamwork.
Well, absolutely. And you guys, just really kudos. I, I don't, I don't know if I should like cry because I'm so happy or I should get up on the table and jump up and down. And it's hard to get information out to families. We think it's easy because we live in this bubble where we kind of know it all, but so many people just don't know it all. But what I will say is, um, every time we hear something, the, the Face Office is a part of it. And you guys are out there and I thank you. But there's something you said at the beginning that was so important, um, and I wrote it down. Thank you for celebrating the lived experiences of others. And that is completely evident in everything that you do, everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could take away anything from anybody else's, it's not going to be the last two days, but you guys have been a service.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, thank you. And I've got some questions for several in the back, so I don't know. I've got supply rack, language ambassadors, and partners. So, um,
I'll be more than happy to come up and answer those questions.
I know they will be. But yes, I mean, yes, come on up. One stop, one shop. I mean, that's what we had been talking about for so long before we started this. And I know that was huge in the special education community and just to get everything in one place. And so it, it's just coming true and it's great and it's, it's, it makes it easier, a difficult task as Ms. Melnick, it does make it hopefully a little bit easier. Okay, supply racks, that thing is so darn awesome. I love, I love that thing. I'm, I'll share with you online what I have in my classroom that's similar to that. But, um, how do we get, like, have you involved the churches? Because I, I just see this as a great, like, my church, you know, especially the elderly people. How, how do I help? I'm like, here's the supply rack list, you know, constantly donate. How can we, I mean, how is that getting filled or how's it gonna get filled or can we get that out or have you already done it?
Both answer this question, but we, I go to the Interfaith Alliance at the Beach meetings monthly. Um, I'm actually serving on their leadership and capacity building team. And so through that, my representation as the school division person allows us to have that opportunity. So I'm able to say, well, this month we need khaki pants, which we did for Renaissance. There were some students there that needed pants, so we were able to put that out to the IAV and they put it out to the church communities and we got a ton of different pants.
Yeah.
Were able to do that with us, all sorts of things. And then, of course, Jen, she can, yeah, you do that part.
So one of our family outreach representatives, who's probably out in the hallway, Rebecca Heddings, is actually working with me on the My Friend's Closet part and managing the United Way funding. So we are reaching out to individual partners, churches, and we're saying, hey, instead of them doing like big school drive, school supply drives, which we love, don't tell, I'm not gonna tell you not to do that. But we're reaching out to them and saying, okay, we need your church to do hoodies. We need your church to do sweatpants. We need underwear and socks. We need this particular thing from your group. Um, and then we're restocking with that. Money-wise, as far as restocking the specific racks to get, to get back, circle back to the racks, we're also asking the churches to do that. When that doesn't happen, we do have some money from United Way that was earmarked to put into our middle, put those racks into our middle schools. We had additional funding that we were able to do that, and so now we still have that money available to help restock all of those items. So, Dr. Alexander, when he, when we said we want to put them in all eighty-six schools, asked a lot of questions, a lot of good questions, and one was, we cannot have empty racks. And I promise you, we will not have empty racks. I will find a way to get them filled.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, people are always asking, how can I help? How can I help? And this is a, exactly. This is a perfect, not too overwhelming, but we need, you know, to earn this school ten bucks, you know, twenty highlighters, whatever. So great, okay, love that. Okay, the language arts ambassadors, did you say we hadn't had them to represent how many different languages right now?
I'm pretty loud, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hi, everyone. Um, so the language ambassadors, we started out with twenty-one languages and thirty-one schools. That was our very first cohort, um, which we trained last fall and have been in the schools this spring. With the new cohort coming in, we have sixty-five new volunteers that have signed up, um, and they speak an additional range of languages that brings our total up to twenty-three languages across the division for this fall.
Okay, and so if I'm one of those volunteers, do I have a set time that I need to be in the buildings? Or is it all flexible or is it more at the first of the year or does that?
No, it's, it's really about creating representation and visibility when you're in the building. So no one's, this, we're not asking people to work outside of their, their staff hours, their school hours. Um, it's being visible when they're in the building. Um, some of our language ambassadors really want to do more, and so I'll send out opportunities. For example, for the Care Fair, I sent out a message to all of the language ambassadors and said, hey, who wants to come and interpret at this event? And then that gives an opportunity to say, I would like to do that. Um, but no, there's no requirement outside of their,
So just wear that badge and people associate and connect.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. And then the, the Care Fair, Jen, that's you. If we know someone who wants to be involved, we send them to you. Okay, excellent. Soon, yeah. I'm, I'm talking about before you leave today. I've got somebody, so we'll talk. Okay, thank you so much. Good job.
All right, and last, we have a, a small short tour to take you all on to,
Do we have more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Let me slow down.
Ms. Owens.
You know, we're excited to have you guys. We're excited for the tour though, too. I just have a couple of quick ones. You all know that I love the Face Office. That's my spot, so I, I won't go into your flowers because I come, I want to deliver them to you guys in person when I come again. The listening groups, I think they're awesome. Um, I know that you have twelve going or had twelve for this school year. Are you able to share with us what, uh, schools those twelve were and any ideas of where we're gonna be seeing expansion next? And I ask partially with the, the board in mind that we yesterday brought up, making sure that we are reaching our Bayside community and getting feedback and not sure if they are on the list yet or already or?
Yeah, so, so in attempt to try to expand a little bit more and be a little bit more exclusive, we're kind of, we've, we've been learning, right? And so we're moving away from trying to have these individual schools because frankly, we don't have the, the capacity to, to have, we don't have eighty-six people to do that. So what we're looking to do is actually kind of loop them with, um, elementary, middle, and high school to give us a greater capacity, learn a little bit more information. At the same time, in doing that, we also want to try to maintain our intimacy of the groups. Um, that's really important. Um, when you have groups that are too big, people don't want to talk. Um, they wait for other people to say things and you really can't get a good indication of what some of the needs are over the community. So, um, moving forward, it's gonna be a different model of what we're gonna look at. And we're still gonna try, uh, reach out to our counselors and our social workers and other, um, uh, internal stakeholders to figure out how can we get parents involved in it? But it's gonna be more in terms of, uh, grouping levels, elementary, middle, high, rather than individual schools.
That is helpful to know. Told us how we can get connected with the newsletter. You guys showed a lot of, uh, videos that I thought are really engaging to help the community be aware of what's being offered that I, I know I would love to share. I'm sure others might want to share them. Are those videos available on your page for us to share? Or do we need to just like touch base with Natalie and, okay?
Touch base with Ms. Allen and then you all.
Perfect. Well, that's all I have for right now. You guys are awesome. I'm so excited of the growth.
We have more, so just relax for a moment.
Outstanding job. I just want to say thank you on behalf of a family that specifically was helped by the pants and the shirts for Renaissance. So I know that was a big deal, huge deal, and just the resource alone. I, I didn't realize it was your direct office that helped with that, so thank you. I just wanna, uh, say, I really, really appreciate that. Um, and then secondly, you know, when we have people, when I, I know that I, I used to be a PAC chair and when you say, hey, we have this need, nobody really steps up, right? They'll still say, oh, I want to help, but then unless you specifically tell people, hey, I need you to do this, I need you to do this, you know, or this is how you do it. So how do we find out or how do families find out exactly what your needs list is?
Hey, so we actually have a, an Amazon wishlist. Um, and on that Amazon wishlist is everything that we need and everything that we stock in My Friend's Closet.
Okay, so again, I, I don't, that, that's wonderful.
So that's on our resource page?
Well, how, tell us specifically how to access that.
So is that on our resource page? Okay, we're gonna add that to the resource page. So it's a link, it's a QR code that goes right to the Amazon wishlist. So we'll put that on there.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we do have a flyer that goes out to churches, et cetera, so that's how they find out about it. Yeah, social media and those kind of things.
Okay.
And it's actually, I think it's on the BBEF page, is it on there too? And it's in the newsletter, so, you know.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, as board members, sometimes we say, how can we help? Okay.
But it is on the BBEF page as an Amazon wishlist.
Okay. And then, um, just can you speak to the teacher grants that were, were discussed in the? Can you just, can you just discuss the teacher grants? I, I'm sure that there are probably people watching that have no idea what's available, how that works.
Again, being from up north, I think I've allowed enough voice, but then again, maybe not so much. So for teacher grants, um, we have several different levels, and we offer those in the spring and the fall. So our next, uh, grants deadline will be in October. We're looking at a different platform in the past. It's been a PDF form that we've sent out, had available on the internet SharePoint site, and that will change, uh, just to make it more easy for you or I to apply as a VB CPS employee and also easier for us on the backside of processing those applications and making it more unified, so there's even less potential for bias, although it is a blind review and we do take identifying information off. So this year we have two hundred thousand dollars to offer. We went through the spring grant cycle and have offered some of those funds, but we'll have a fall grant cycle as well, and the deadline will be mid-October. So I tell people to look out for communique either through the SharePoint site or, you know, a general, um, email that will go out to all employees saying, this is available, please apply.
Okay.
And of course, if anybody ever has any questions, and this is on every application, my email, my direct phone, I mean, I'm, I'm an advocate for it as well as hopefully, um, uh, able to help them with the process because I don't read the applications on purpose so that I'm not, you know, part of that process and I can actually help behind the scenes. So if any teachers, and I've had many teachers and principals call me in their office, meet with a group of employees and talk about how they can apply for particular projects or questions that they might have.
Okay, and, and that's just one other thing I just wanted to highlight is, you know, there, there are probably some people that are like, well, for what is it for? Like, why should I apply? Is it for, you know, what is it to be used for? You know, what are the situations?
So a lot of people will come to me and say, I need this, and it's a tangible something. And I tell them, great, so what are you gonna do with this? So, you know, the special widget that I want that I think will really enhance my classroom, well, what are they gonna do with it? So it's more based about a project of what the students are gonna be doing with. well, what are they going to do with it? So it's more based about a project of what the students are going to be doing with the items, ultimately knowing that the project will include items that have to be put into the budget. And that's really what they're trying to get ultimately. But again, there needs to be some accountability as to improvement in their education and learning and hands-on and, and things that they want to achieve. A lot of schools have different needs, obviously, with a diverse communities we have. So some may want to, you know, up their levels in, in science. Some may want to, you know, do something comprehensive between arts and PE. I mean, it's all over the gamut. Very simple application, only four questions. And again, you know, I exist to support the teachers and students. So that's why I want to make sure that they have every easy opportunity to get funding.
Nice. Thank you again for everything you all do.
So if I can piggyback on that, and then we have Mrs. Felton, but I, I wasn't going to let Debbie get away. I wanted to spread the love too, because, um, and Mrs. Anderson can speak to this as well. But just for the benefit of the public, to stress that the school board chair serves as officio on the Education Foundation Board. Superintendent's a member. There are, there's a handful of other staff, key staff members who serve on this board. And when I started attending meetings as chair, um, I was just blown away by the exponential growth of the donations in the last two decades since we first moved here, when I was first introduced to the foundation. So I mean, when she talks about giving away 200,000 in grants this year, that's just the tip of the iceberg on, on what's sitting in these accounts right now. But having said that, I don't want to dissuade donors. And of course, it's the job of, and we have wonderful board members that represent the community that, that, you know, and part of their responsibility is to, to seek out donors and, 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 and they do so. Uh, there was just a fundraiser, your golf tournament fundraiser was June. The, the Pearls of Wisdom, uh, ro, event at the oceanfront, many of, of my colleagues sitting here have been annual, uh, donors or participants in that. That's a, a wonderful, uh, event. And, and these, these grant recipients are honored every December by the foundation. It's been at the Sandler Center, I think, at least for the time I've served on the board.
Yeah, December 8th, it will be at the Sandler Center.
And there's a very impressive and formal recognition program that, that covers that. And it's op, an opportunity to, uh, the, the teachers are connected with the donors, right?
Correct, yeah.
If you could speak a little to, so that really personalizes it too.
Yeah, when I came to this organization, it was very important for me for two reasons. Uh, to make sure, I've been in the for-profit world, to make sure that the donors get to see their results with the end user. It was hard for me, it's working for major companies, stroking a check, five, six numbers and just going like this. And knowing that overhead is so high, this is my second thing, is, um, being able to work with an organization where our overhead is so low. So our overhead is only about 1.7 to 5% each year, uh, and it just ranges. But because of this collaboration with the school division, uh, who employs me and my assist, associate, I'm very fortunate to be able to go to donors and say, our overhead is very low. Um, and working in nonprofit worlds, um, that's huge, at least for me it is. So those are the two things that I was very passionate about when I came on board 20 years ago. And thank you for the plug. And the golf tournament did raise $44,000 net. So we're very excited. That was June 29th. Um, one thing I wanted to mention too, I mentioned in the presentation, our house project, we're able to self-fund now. That is huge. I cannot tell you. We've had to go for loans with banks for property and construction. And you know that the house project takes several years. So imagine that interest accruing each month as we're spending more. Because we've raised money, we're able to self-fund this year. So we do not have any interest payments to pay out. So that to me is, I, I get chills. And 20 years of doing this is the first time I can say we do that. Um, and that's, that's why we're so fortunate. We have grown a lot. Thank you.
And my only other, it's just a comment, and I, it wasn't, uh, it was like secondhand removed. But my understanding is that in terms of grant applicants, speaking to Ms. Franklin's question, uh, there are certain schools that have not had a grant applicant in recent years. And I understand that you're aware of that and taking steps to, to do the proper outreach.
Exactly, yeah. Several of my Education Foundation Board members and myself meet one-on-one with those principals just to make sure, you know, as principal rotation happens, there's not a miscommunique, they, they may not know about this program. And making sure that from the top-down level that it's infused into the school as an opportunity. Yes.
So, Mrs. Felton, thank you, Chair, right? And I just wanted to say the acronym for FACE is Family and Communication and Community Engagement. I want to make sure they know what that is. Use a lot of acronyms all the time. Debbie, thank you for all that you do as well.
Thank you.
And the, and the grant, I've come to, I've been to several of the, uh, events when we were getting out and they were just, uh, exciting to see all that you do. Uh, the day for August 13th, what time is that?
And that's at Landstown High School, the school, uh, back-to-school care fair, second annual Landstown High School. August 13th, 10 to 2.
Okay, thank you. Also, um, when I first saw your friend closet, it was sort of kind of small, heavy, all right. When we first opened it, it was small, so it, okay, right. But all that you're doing, I know it had to span, right?
If, if it helps, just to give you a visual, so Jen and I worked so closely together, we switched offices. Literally, I said, how's your furniture? I like it. You like my furniture? Great, leave it there. So she's in room 25 so that she has the expansion space for the My Friends Closet. Whereas I'm in her office and then Betsy is, uh, next door in the old My Friends Closet, which is much smaller.
My, how we've grown, we've grown, yes. Um, uh, what, two more things. The cards that you handed us, uh, Dr. Alexander, can, can I get several?
Absolutely.
I have an event I have to go to and I want to make sure we volunteer. Thank you. And.
You can have the whole pack if you want.
Great. Thank you, thank you. And, uh, okay, all right. And, um, uh, Jen, you spoke about the SWAM, that department. Could, um, how are we, um, engaging and, and, and the women that spoke, a couple of them, I know them. So we, we are asked how we're engaging more so with SWAM. So can you let me know what else, what's the next steps, what else we're doing?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'm glad you asked that because I'm actually meeting, meeting with the Minority Business Council here coming up. I'll be speaking to them, um, to make sure that we have a, a, we can diversify our, our pool of, uh, community partners. It's pretty diverse, to be, to be clear, but we just want to make sure that we're including everyone. And so I contacted them actually just last week. So thank you for the plug. That was a convenient opportunity to say that. Um, and I will be, um, attending one of the, I don't, not scheduled just yet, but I'll be attending their meeting and speaking to them about how they can partner with VB CPS.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You know, I just want to end with, um, you guys, I've been watching you for the last couple of years. And I just want to say, um, you really do inspire me to do more and to be more. And so Rachel, estoy aprendiendo, pero mi español es malo. But I work, I'm studying every day to get better. So, um, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Allen, do you want to segue us into?
So Dr. Alexander and I will be happy to take those of you who want to tour, um, on a tour. And just to echo what some of you said here today, I'm so incredibly proud of this office and this team and everything they've accomplished in a year. It just doesn't seem like you can do that much in a year. And so the fact that these Herculean efforts have occurred in the midst of a pandemic and everything else just makes my heart happy. So thank you all for everything you do.
And following our tour, we'll be back here for a retreat wrap-up. Okay.
Yep. If we could just, just stay on time, do that right at 4 o'clock.
I'm sorry.
Be right, right, just for an agenda staying on time, if we could just be back here right at 4 o'clock.
Yes.
Thanks.
Good afternoon again. We're, we're, we're back in session to wrap up this retreat before we begin our Bridge School Board meeting. And we are here to, uh, to really summarize and, and go and, and leave the superintendent and his staff with an understanding of, of, of what we walk away with from this.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, uh, Madam Chairwoman. So, yeah, as in years past, I'm just going to go through some of the follow-ups for, for staff. And, um, of course, then we'll, we'll leave it open for, um, for your comments to make sure we didn't miss anything. Um, before I do that, if I could just say, um, I hope the last two days have been illustrative of the kind of work that's going on in the school division and some of the incredible things that have happened. Um, you know, certainly in light of the pandemic, but as we prepare for the new school year as well. And I'm very proud of our team, the incredible group of people that are in the room with you right now and the work that they've done. And I hope you enjoyed and appreciated their presentations and, um, their responsiveness to your questions as much as I did. And I think they deserve a round of applause. So thank you guys for your work. So, um, as far as, um, just kind of going through the two days of the agenda, um, what I have down in terms of capturing is, um, two workshops, two potential workshops. Um, one is around, um, our efforts to address student behavior, what we have been doing and where we need to go. Um, based on, um, some of the information from the employee, uh, survey. Also, potential, um, potential, um, workshop, talking about, um, some of the other issues that were discussed during the compensation study. So some of the things that we're doing to think about and deal with staffing retention issues. So as we start to talk with employees about workload and some other issues, being able to come back to you and follow up with you um, on those issues. Um, some, some next steps in terms of, um, things that we have to take care of. We, we heard loud and clear from the board yesterday that you all do want us to go and conduct community input meetings around the development of the Bayside Tri-Campus and, and what that might look like. And so we will make sure that we get those scheduled and, um, and do so in time to bring back, um, some recommended action for you that aligns with our need for the design process, but also gives us time to do that in a, in a comprehensive way. Also, uh, we know we need to follow up with you on, uh, the details of the employee input process. You, you heard a little bit about that today. And then we said our next step would include talking about the timeline and the number of meetings and how that structure will work. And so we got the, the direction and the sense from the board that you're prepared for us to move forward with that process. And so we'll come back to you, uh, in follow-up. And I don't know if that's in workshop format or just through memo, but we'll, we'll decide, we'll determine that, um, to give you the details of that process. And then also in the fall, you will get, and this was just based on timeline conversations from two of the presentations. You will in the, um, fall have an additional follow-up on the equity plan, the, the process and development that's taking place there. And then you'll also in the late fall, um, hear more about the compensation study, um, and the results of that, um, study. So today you, or, yeah, today you heard a little bit about kind of the initial, uh, findings and survey results. But the study itself, the market analysis, hasn't been conducted and we'll be bringing information about that back, uh, in the late fall. And that, uh, the intention there is to do that in a manner that would allow us to, um, influence the budget conversation for the next school year. So that's what I have. Say again? Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you so much. Uh, the other thing that we did say that we would follow up with you on is, um, and we got the, the clear consensus of the group. We think to move forward with planning about the recovery school. And, um, so we will make sure that we're following up with you all, um, about our, our, um, our pro, uh, progress there and, um, about our work that we intend to do through the legislative process to try to get some support for that legislatively as well as other financial support. And then just generally the details of answering a lot of the questions that you were asked as we were going through that yesterday. So we will also follow up with you on that and should have more of that information for you initially in the fall as well. Okay, so I think that's everything. Um, were there other topics that, um, you had on, um, your mind? So you remember yesterday afternoon, I said, if you have other budget priorities you want us to be aware of, if you have other workshop topics you'd like us to be aware of, that, um, you know, be thinking about that. So I'll just pause here and ask, did I miss anything? And/or are there other, um, topics on your mind?
Looks like that covers it.
Great. Well, uh, I know administration wants to also thank you, school board members, for your, um, attention over the last two days. That's a lot of sitting and listening, but, um, also not just your attention, but your thoughtfulness and the questions that you've asked us and the direction that you've given us. We appreciate that. Certainly, these retreats can be, um, can be long, but we also find that they do give us great direction for the school year. And so they remain an important part of our annual process together. So we thank you for that. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll hand it back over to you and you can launch into your stuff.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I don't want to repeat myself from yesterday, but I will. It's just to thank my colleagues again for being available and, and engaged. And, and our collective thanks as well to our, to our leadership team for all the, uh, the preparation and presentations to, uh, these past two days. Uh, for the benefit of the, of the public, we'll be doing a, a short transition. Uh, we'll con, formally conclude our retreat. We'll have a short transition and, and, and resume, uh, in the next five minutes or so, our Bridge School Board meeting, which will begin with a closed session. And then we'll be back here and that'll be announced again, uh, at the start of the meeting. So with that then, um, this retreat is, is concluded.